Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Karen Adams.
Here.
Karen Berry.
Here.
Joseph Demott.
Here.
Joyce J.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
And Mike Stites.
Here.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of April 26, 2010?
Second.
A motion to approve, seconded by Councilmember Stites. Please poll the council on the minutes.
Sorry, I hadn't activated your voting. Go ahead and push again. Motion carries eight to zero.
A motion was to approve by Councilmember Sang, and then seconded by Councilmember Stites. We have two proclamations tonight, so I will run down to the podium. We have one proclamation tonight. I would ask Mrs. Wheatridge to please come forward, and the chief, for our proclamation, 2010 National Police Week.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, citizens of Wheat Ridge. Good evening. To recognize National Police Week 2010, and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy, and whereas the members of the Wheat Ridge Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the city of Wheat Ridge, and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the duties, responsibilities, hazards, and sacrifices of the Wheat Ridge Police Department, and that members of the Wheat Ridge Police Department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression, and whereas the men and women of the Wheat Ridge Police Department unceasingly provide a vital public service, therefore be it resolved that Mayor Jerry DeTulio and the Wheat Ridge City Council call upon all citizens of the city of Wheat Ridge and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of May 9 to May 16, 2010 as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies and observances in which all of our people may join in commemorating law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. I further call upon all citizens of the city of Wheat Ridge to observe Saturday, May 15, 2010 as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those law enforcement officers who through their courageous deeds have made the ultimate sacrifice and service to their community or who have become disabled in the performance of duty, and let us recognize and pay respect to the survivors of our fallen heroes.
National Police Week is always a pretty solemn occasion in policing, both at a national level and honoring all the police officers that were killed nationally in Washington, DC, but on this past Friday, May 7, we had members of the Wheat Ridge Police Department had the opportunity to participate in the Colorado Law Enforcement Memorial where we added another name of a Montrose Police Officer, Officer Kinderconnect, who was shot and killed July 5 of last year. So it's always a solemn time, but it's also a time where law enforcement officers throughout the state and nationally recommit to the service of the community, and that comes with a cost, but it's a cost that I think the majority of police officers feel is worthwhile in terms of providing public safety services to our community. So Mayor and Council citizens, thank you for your support, and we are honored to continue to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Mrs. Wheatridge. Our next presentation tonight is the Wheat Ridge 2020 Planning Academy graduates. We have a planning academy once a year or twice a year, depending on the situation, with Wheat Ridge 2020, and here tonight is Denise Balkis to award the certificates of completion and graduation.
Thank you, members and mayors of City Council. Tonight, I want to introduce you to the fourth class of the Planning and Development Academy, and with this group of graduates, 75 people have gone through the academy to date. Two of your City Council members, your city clerk, many business people in the community, a lot of them are sitting on boards and commissions or have applications to sit on boards and commission. So I've found in the past four years, they're just people who care about Wheat Ridge, they care about city planning and development, and just want to learn and really have the best interests of the city at heart. So with that, the mayor's going to help me, and we're going to award them their certificates.
Where'd you go?
Sally Banghart, please come up and get them. And Ryan Fisher, and Ryan is not here this evening. Joe Hahn. And Lina Hahn. Kim Har. Lana Harris. Paul Hoblin. Tara Jean. And Donna Kimsey is not here tonight. Jerry Roach. Erica Severnson. Amy Sherman. And Joseph Springer, he's not here tonight, and Denise Waddell. And lastly, Stuart Wright.
The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So please step forward to the public comment podium, and please spell your last name for the record, and give us your name and/or your address, your city or your address.
Hi, my name is John Marriott, J-O-H-N-M-A-R-R-I-O-T-T. I'm at 5595 Carr Street in Arvada. I'm also the chairperson of the Wheat Ridge Business District. And tonight, I'd like to speak on two things. Number one, I'd like to encourage other members of council or the mayor in standing with Councilwoman J about directing staff to put together the Connecting the Dots Summit. I think one of the strengths of Wheat Ridge is the groups that we have that are citizens' involvement groups, and we all have great potential to work together, and I think any opportunity we could have to get together, learn more about each other, and ways we can help each other out would be beneficial. And I think the staff could put together a very nice summit between the groups within Wheat Ridge along with the council and the mayor, and achieve a very, a lot of progress at little to no cost to the city. So that's the first thing I'd like to just encourage someone to please bring that up and get staff directed to do that. The second thing I'd like to speak on today, as the chairperson of the Wheat Ridge Business District, is to give you a little update on where the Business District is at. The Business District has been running our facade and sign grant for a number of years. The program has continued to grow and become more successful. We feel like the program is making a difference. Some of the nicest buildings in our city have been impacted by the program, things such as Crest tile and Wheat Ridge Cyclopes and Amici's, and many, many others. In fact, our program has been successful enough that we find ourselves spending our money faster than we're getting it. And I would like to encourage the council to bring forth an agenda item and put it on a study session so that we can make a presentation to you all about the good things that we're doing and why some additional funding may be warranted. Thank you.
Thank you. Please spell your last name for the record.
S-N-O-W, West 40th. I wanted to urge the council tonight to use the services of, can you hear me? Of our city commissions, which I think sometimes doesn't happen. And tonight particularly, I want to talk to you about the Park Commission, and you all know, and anybody at home, I'm not on the Park Commission, but I know there are a group of people who are very dedicated to the city, as are all of the members of our commissions. People volunteer because they're interested in the city, and they would like to have their opinions solicited and respected. But two things happened in the last couple of weeks that somehow make me feel that's not happening. First, I went to one of the four meetings where, I don't know if you've seen it, but they have presented this very nice new park, I'm sorry, it's not a park, it's a bicycle and pedestrian plan. And it's very well done, gives a lot of choices, got a lot of good input, and best of all, they asked everybody there which of all these plans they thought were the best, or they'd like to be done first. And then I discovered later that this has not been to the Parks Commission, which I find very strange. In fact, on one night when they were discussing this, this was on one side of the hall at the rec center, and the Park Commission was meeting on the other side, and they don't know anything about it. And in the past, I always thought the Parks Commission was always involved in making and certainly voting on or recommending all the kind of park issues as well as pedestrian paths. So they were kind of left out, and I think they should be involved. And then the second thing that happened, that I'm sure you're going to hear a lot more of tonight, is that there was a presentation to the council about considering and possibly buying three different parcels for the four parks. None of those have been to the Park Commission. I spoke to somebody, they were kind of shocked, like, why? Well, maybe one of them has. I take it back. One of them, in fact, the last time it came up, the council voted not to buy it, but this time, it came to the City Council, and never has been to the Park Commission. So I would like to ask you to consider, anytime you get anything like this, that to go to the Park Commission first. Certainly, the City Council's always the final say, but, you know, it should go to the Commission for their opinion. Thanks, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Please step forward for public comment, and spell your last name for the record, and state your city and your address.
Louise Turner, 11256 West 38th Avenue, Wheat Ridge. On last week's agenda, I noticed the little item that said "Park Acquisitions." Sounded perfectly harmless, but I went in and checked the distribution to the council of the information that you get that we don't get, but it's in your little space out there. And there was a property which borders on Lena Gulch. And Lena Gulch, to everybody in District 3 west of Kipling, is a red flag. Way back, as far ago, was in the 80s, the park director had it on his agenda. It apparently is still on the agenda. At that time, a Park Commission meeting, which very seldom called ever gets a crowd, suddenly had 50 people in this room because a trailhead at Lena Gulch was on, Lena Gulch and Quail was on that agenda. The director then explained in detail over and over that there was absolutely no plan for a trail on Lena Gulch, but he never would tell why it was on the agenda. Thirty years later, 2006 was the last time that it was discussed. We thought it had been put to bed then. It was first noticed when there was an open house at the rec center, and not in the park area, but in the public works area. There was a big map which showed the trail on Lena Gulch all the way from 32nd Avenue and Ward Road, across to the east and up to the north, and ending at the rec center, and then eventually going on to the Green Belt Trail. This was the first notice. Shortly after this, it came to a public hearing in this room. The backup material in your packet says that this was on the proposed map, bike map, but that it was removed because of lack of interest and lack of support from the neighborhood. Well, lack of support is a far different story than what actually happened. There've only been probably four to five times, I can think of three, when this room was packed to overflowing. The condemnation on Sheridan, the ill-fated deal across the street, and one third one was the trail on Lena Gulch. This room was packed, people were standing, many of them were carrying a group of petitions to turn in. It was an overpowering voice of opposition. They told about many reasons, they all were taken into consideration, and at that point in time, this council, four of whom are still here tonight, voted seven to one to take it off of the park plan. What they did not do was the follow-up request which many of the people made, which was to label the Lena Gulch corridor on all of the map plans, of all of the park plans, as inappropriate for trail use. They referred to the taking of private property, the invasion of private plate pieces, the dangers from the rapid and often releases of water that are let out of consolidated mutual with no warning, the habitat, the attitude of the people, and it was a very decisive thing. The council did not put it on the map as being inappropriate for trail use, and apparently it is still very much on the agenda of the Park Department. I don't know how much, how interested you are, I did listen to the tape of the meeting, it seemed to me that somewhere, perhaps, the Park Department should have mentioned this overpowering opposition to this particular plan. Mr. Stites did bring up that you might have trouble when you got to Louise Turner's property, and I thank him for at least remembering that there is a property there. What was not brought up, and I think maybe you'd have no idea what it is, but this property used to be Ernestine Williams Farm. Ernestine was determined that it would be protected. She did not want it to be developed. She often referred to it as her heaven on earth, and she was going to find some way to protect it. She went through Colorado Open Lands, which is a state organization. It, on the map of, the state map from Colorado Open Lands, this property, which is 12 acres, is referred to and named the Wheat Ridge, excuse me, the Williams Wildlife Preserve. What that easement says is 12 acres, one living unit, the balance of the property in wildlife habitat and agricultural use, that it is not to be divided, and that it is not intended for public use. She was very much ahead of her time in realizing that anything that isn't protected is under threat. Mr. Stites mentioned that going through this property, which I am co-owner, but I am not a sole owner, and I wasn't the one who put the easement on, but she had faith that I would keep an eye on it as long as I was alive. The property does not end at Lena Gulch. I think the statement was made that if you went through that property, it would have to be to the south of Lena Gulch. However, the property goes clear to 35th Avenue. When this came out on the map, it hit me like a red flag because I looked at this map. There had been no publicity, there had been nothing saying there was this kind of a map coming along, and our property was not only cut east to west, almost right in the middle, but it was also cut north to south on Quail Street. So this wonderful piece of property was going to be cut like this for public access and for a disturbance to what it was designated to preserve. I don't know how much you are planning, I listened to the comments, there was never any mention during your meeting last week. I couldn't come to the meeting, but I did take the liberty of listening to the tape. There was no mention of the previous opposition. Now, out of the people who were on the council that voted seven-one to take this off the map, there are four of you here tonight. Excuse me. Mrs. Berry, Mrs. Sang, Mr. Stites, and Mrs. Adams, the last two are the two who represent our area. Somehow, when the council makes a decision, seven to one, it should have some effect on what the staff is doing. But the staff is not responsible to the people. If they come up with things that are in serious opposition to the people of the community or of a certain area, it is up to you people to keep them in line with what the citizens really want. I really thought that, I don't know how far you intend to go with this, it sounded like they were ready for you to be gung-ho. We're all aware that it's possible, and has been done many times, where a little piece here, a little piece there is acquired, and then pretty soon, the whole thing falls in place, and the last piece completes the project. We also have seen many times where in the heat of a public hearing with 100, 200 people present, the council will vote something down, but only to have it come back later under a different title, quietly, with new people on the council, and new people on the commission. In this case, this came back as "Park Acquisitions," which I said sounds pretty harmless. But I really thought that it was important for the four of you, the three who were recently elected, and Mrs. Langworthy, who was not on the council at that time, for you people to have a little bit of knowledge of what had gone on regarding this property just four years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody? Ms. Berry?
Yeah, I would just like to respond a little bit to Mrs. Turner. You know, I did remember the discussion about the Lena Gulch Trail, and I agree with you, I don't think we should be looking at properties that are not included on the master plan, and if we were going to do, look at something like that, I believe that we would, that before we do that, we should amend the master plan and open it back up to public discussion. So I agree with you wholeheartedly on those points.
Do we have anybody else to speak on our public comment?
Karen Thaler, T-H-A-L-E-R. I live at 6161 West 29th Place in Wheat Ridge. Just switching gears here a little bit for a moment, some of you might be wondering why I'm so dressed up this evening for a city council meeting. I'm here to announce that this Saturday night, I will be competing for Mrs. Colorado and representing our fine city. Give you some details here. It is this Saturday, May 15, at Ellie Colkins Opera House downtown in the Performing Arts Complex. Doors open at 6:00 PM. Tickets are $25, and they can be purchased at the door. The pageant begins at 7:00 PM. I would love to have the support in representing our city at this year's pageant, and I'm pleased to announce that Mayor and Mrs. DeTulio will be attending, so if anyone wants to join them, that would be fabulous. This is a wonderful opportunity to get some additional exposure for Wheat Ridge. I truly enjoy representing our city and would love a huge cheering section. That would just be fabulous. So thank you so much, and hopefully I'll see you Saturday night. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else on our public comment before we move on to the agenda? Seeing none, are there any changes to the agenda tonight? The agenda will stand by unanimous consent. Item one is the consent agenda. Councilmember Demott? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Consent item 1A, a motion to approve renewal and encumber funds for the 2010 Activities Guide Printing Services to publication printers in the amount of $39,384. Contract 1B, contract award to complete climate control in the amount of $19,217 for the installation of the mechanical systems for the ball house. 1C, a motion to approve the annual renewal for the mobile cop computer system
under a different title, quietly with new people on the council and new people on the commission. In this case, this came back as Park Acquisitions, which I said sounds pretty harmless. But I really thought that it was important for the four of you, the three who were recently elected, and Mrs. Langworthy, who was not on the council at that time, for you people to have a little bit of knowledge of what had gone on regarding this property just four years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody, Ms. Berry?
Yeah, I would just like to respond a little bit to Mrs. Turner. You know, we, I did remember the discussion about the Lena Gulch Trail, and I agree with you, I don't think we should be looking at properties that are not included on the master plan. And if we were going to do, look at something like that, I believe that we would, that before we do that, we would, we should amend the master plan and open it back up to public discussion. So, I agree with you wholeheartedly on those points.
Do you have anybody else to speak on their public comment?
Karen Thaler, T-H-A-L-E-R. I live at 6161 West 29th Place in Wheat Ridge. Just switching gears here a little bit for a moment, some of you might be wondering why I'm so dressed up this evening for a city council meeting. I'm here to announce that this Saturday night, I will be competing for Mrs. Colorado and representing our fine city. Give you some details here. It is this Saturday, May 15th, at Ellie Culkin's Opera House downtown in the Performing Arts Complex. Doors open at 6:00 PM. Tickets are $25, and they can be purchased at the door. The pageant begins at 7:00 PM. I would love to have the support in representing our city at this year's pageant, and I'm pleased to announce that Mayor and Mrs. DeTulio will be attending. So, if anyone wants to join them, that would be fabulous. This is a wonderful opportunity to get some additional exposure for Wheat Ridge. I truly enjoy representing our city and would love a huge cheering section, that would just be fabulous. So, thank you so much, and hopefully I'll see you Saturday night. Thank you.
Do we have anybody else on their public comment before we move on to the agenda? Seeing none, are there any changes to the agenda tonight? The agenda will stand by unanimous consent. Item one is the consent agenda, Councilmember Demont. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Langworthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent item one A, a motion to approve renewal encumber funds for the 2010 Activities Guide Printing Services to Publication Printers in the amount of $39,384. Contract, one B, contract award to complete climate control in the amount of $19,217 for the installation of the mechanical systems for the ball house. One C, a motion to approve the annual renewal for the mobile cop computer system in the amount of $24,174 to interact public safety systems. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve one A, B, and C.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve items A, B, and C, second by Councilmember Stites, discussion on the consent agenda. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances and resolutions on second reading. The order of testimony will be staff, the applicant, and then also, public. So, item two is Council Bill 04-2010. I'm going to open the public hearing, Councilmember Stites.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 04-2010, an ordinance repealing and reenacting certain sections of Chapter Five of the Code of Laws of the City of Wheat Ridge concerning the Building Code, the Mechanical Code, the Plumbing Code, the Energy Conservation Code, the Residential Code, the Fire Code, the Fuel/Gas Code, and penalties for violations of the same.
Would the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 04-2010 will be assigned ordinance number 1460.
Thank you. We'll move on to a staff presentation.
We'll have a brief presentation from our chief building official, John Schumacher.
Thank you. Please state your name, explain your last name for the record, and your title.
John Schumacher, Chief Building Official, S-C-H-U-M-A-C-H-E-R. The bill before you contains amendments and proposal to adopt 2006 versions of the international residential, building, plumbing, mechanical, fuel/gas, energy conservation, and fire codes. The 2003 versions of all of these codes are currently in use within the city. Each of these codes has a series of amendments made to them in the ordinance. The ordinance is a result, and those amendments are a result, of an almost two-year process that included input from licensed contractors, independent consulting firms, an appointed committee and task force, and at the direction of city council on the previous reading. There are some amendments that are significant, which are the new fee schedule with a reduced base fee and reduced reinspection fees, flat fees for specific projects. We have incorporated the table created by the mayor's task force to increase the number of occupants, occupants permitted before requiring separate sex plumbing facilities. We have replaced Chapter Four of the 2006 IMC with Chapter Four of the 2009 IMC, the International Mechanical Code, which is, concerns ventilation. And there are a variety of other amendments that are lesser in scope, many which are administrative. The Building Division believes that the amendments contained within the ordinance accurately represent the consensus opinion resulting from the recommendations of the various groups and appointed and elected bodies providing input.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Please step forward if you'd like to speak on item number two, Council Bill 04-2010. Please explain your last name for the record and state your city and/or your address.
Kim Calomino, C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O, 470 Dover Street, Wheat Ridge. Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity. The codes affecting planning and building in the city serve multiple purposes, as you're well aware. Life, safety of building occupants and residents in general, impacts on neighbors, neighborhoods, and the community at large, and setting expectations for those working in our city, whether they're renovating their own homes or building new facilities and homes, which we greatly look forward to in our community, and in an area that we've been greatly focused on for a number of years now. I commend council and the city for moving forward with the long-awaited adoption of the 2006 codes. I think that's very important to development and renovation in our community. There are at least three task forces who have studied the codes and the building department's ability and focus in administering these codes. I did serve on one of those task forces. I have three items to comment on regarding the ordinance before you. The ordinance as proposed, it does not require any kind of review of the placement of fences, sheds, retaining walls, driveways, or commercial parking lots. Proactively identifying in advance of the construction of those structures provides us a critical opportunity in advance of retroactive complaint-driven responses should a shed or a fence or a commercial parking lot be inappropriately constructed, whether it's too close to a neighbor's property, or if a fence line obstructs sight of vision at an intersection. Waiting until there's a complaint-driven response to that is going to cause that applicant or the owner of that improvement more money than the proposed or originally proposed by staff planning fee. That helps that applicant identify that they're approving, they're proceeding properly. And I would encourage you to reconsider simply passing on any opportunity to see those proposed structures before they get constructed. It also helps us communicate that we have expectations and sets the expectations for those erecting structures in our community. If we're going to have a commercial parking lot built, we want to make sure that it's done properly. If a fence is going to be built, as it was in my own neighborhood on a, on a critical intersection and it obstructs the sightline, I watched that gentleman spend many, many, many evenings trying to comply after the fact with sightline requirement so that there was a life-safety issue addressed. And I'm sure he would rather have known in advance how to build that fence appropriately. So, I would encourage you to consider, reconsider requiring at least a planning permit for those kinds of structures. In regards, and this is just a cautionary comment, I don't have any recommendation for you, but in regards to when you require separate sex facilities in, in buildings, toilet facilities, those are established by a state plumbing code, and the state law requires that you not amend to be less restrictive, the code as set by the state, which this effectively does. The third item, and I know that perhaps you haven't heard any objection from staff, but you have set proposed permit fees at the very lowest of low in the metro area. And while I understand that we want to encourage renovation and development and make it affordable for those who would like to do that in this community, I think you also need to keep in mind that the building department is a fee-for-service aspect of your community. It should not tap the general fund in any way, and it should remain capable of delivering professional and timely services to those who, who are paying for those services. And I would hate to see us debilitate our building department by setting the fees so low that they don't, they can't afford appropriate staff to provide professional and timely services to those who want to work in our communities. I think it's okay to be in line with other jurisdictions. I don't think we need to be the lowest of low-cost jurisdictions in which to build in.
I'm John, excuse me, John Marriott, address 5595 Carr Street, Arvada, Colorado. My spelling is M-A-R-R-I-O-T-T. I was also a member of one of the tasks, task forces that looked at the building codes here within the city of Wheat Ridge. And we spent considerable time studying, considerable time meeting and discussing, and in addition to the little part that I was involved with, the, the staff, other members of the, of the public, as well as the council has spent much time on this. I would encourage you tonight to pass this bill as is without further amendments. I think there's so many details in here that there are many, many, many potential amendments that could be made up one side and down the other. For myself personally, I feel that some of this stuff doesn't go as far as I would have suggested. Others may feel differently. I, I don't think you can amend this to the point where you create perfection or happiness for everybody. And I, I think what you've got before you is a, is a, is a very, very compromised, well-done suggestion and ordinance for you. So, I'd encourage you to, to, to go ahead and pass it. The last speaker brought up actually a couple of, couple of items that, that I'd like to comment on actually, too, and I'm glad you brought them up. With regard to issues like the, the number of restrooms required in commercial spaces, you know, one of the biggest disadvantages Wheat Ridge has in a redevelopment issue is some of our building stock is old building stock and cannot practically be made to, to fit the, the current code. Furthermore, the, the current regulations may serve no purpose. Businesses will use economics to decide what they need and do it more accurately than we can ever put it down in paper. My business is a perfect example. I own a sporting goods store here in the city of Wheat Ridge that's rather large in volume, has a very large occupant load. However, my customers come in, spend a small amount of time, and then leave, and we don't require anywhere near the bathroom facilities that, say, a restaurant or a nightclub or a bar would. If the, if the restroom facilities that I had were insufficient, it would hurt my business, my customers wouldn't come, and believe me, I would provide what's, what's necessary. And I think this one-size-fits-all regulation on things like that is, is difficult, and I think economics solves the problem every time. The second thing with regard to planning permits and building permit fees, I think what, what we'd like to see is, we'd like to see compliance within the building codes, and we'd like to see everybody get a permit for everything that they do. But high building, building permit fees definitely discourage that. I have a friend who currently is remodeling a bathroom here in Wheat Ridge, in a very typical Wheat Ridge house, and the building permit was $880 for a small one-bedroom, or a small one-fixture bathroom. That strikes me as both excessive, number one, but two, it's a very big disincentive for citizens to, to, to get the proper permits to do projects that they're not likely to get caught at. And I think this reduction in, in the fees charged in permits will have, will go a long way towards encouraging the members of the, members of the, the city to, to, to follow the rules and get permits. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public before we move on to council discussion? Next, we'll move on to council discussion or questions. Ms. Berry?
Mr. Schumacher, could you address the comments by Ms. Calomino on whether the rules we're adopting don't meet the state plumbing codes? And can one, what are the implications of that? I mean, you have to be a licensed plumber to... Maybe you can just go ahead.
Mrs. Calomino's comment concerning the state plumbing code and our, our new regulations is correct. We would be, we would be lessening the requirements set forth in the 2006 codes adopted by the state. I would defer to the city attorney as to our ability to do that and what the effect of that would be, but her comment is correct.
All right. Go ahead, and I have another question after that.
As a home rural municipality, typically, we can vary the requirements locally. Over the years, I've been familiar with plumbing, electrical, and building code licensing requirements, and the legislature has gone back and forth on whether it has a declaration of statewide concern and attempts doesn't always succeed in placing basically a floor on what home rural municipalities can do. And that has flip-flopped over the years, and I will tell you, I've not looked to see where their declaration of statewide concern is on, on plumbing and on this particular issue. It's easy to find, and I'm happy to, happy to do that. It would seem to me, it's a pretty integrated package. If in fact, I come to the conclusion that we absolutely have to change that, we can bring an amendment to you. I think it's probably as likely as not that we'll be able to make a reasonable home rural argument, just as the city did with the vested property rights statute, and say that, no, the, the city is allowed as a home rural municipality to prevail. But I appreciate the opportunity to check.
Yeah, short, short answers, you don't know, right?
That's right, Karen.
Okay. The other question I have is, I know the state licenses certain, like electrical, is, are you licensed as a plumber at the state level?
Yes.
So, in order for a plumber, does, so when the, a plumber is licensed at the state level, are they required to file the state codes?
They are required to follow the codes within the jurisdiction in which they're working. Sometimes the code will vary from the state code in, in a more stringent way. They're usually required to follow the code within the jurisdiction.
I would understand if it's more stringent, I'm just wondering less stringent if the local, because it seems like the state code is a minimum, it's set as a minimum. It allows cities to adopt stricter standards, but...
I do not have previous experience dealing with a less stringent than state code.
So, I'm just, yeah, I'm wondering if a licensed plumber would be able to actually do construction that did not meet the minimum, if that's a statewide concern? Those are interesting questions, I guess I don't have the answer for at this point. All right, thank you.
Mr. Schumacher, would you mind explaining to the council where that chart came from in the public, that it was Colorado Code Consulting? Steve Thomas?
That's correct. Colorado Code Consulting was one of the independent firms that reviewed the codes in cooperation with the mayor's task force. The issue was presented that there was some concern about the cost and the fact that we have some older buildings and a way to address the, the cost of putting in separate sex facilities. It was presented as a way to address that by modifying the chart that exists in the code that requires separate sex facilities at a certain occupant level. That occupant level has been altered and has been increased. So, the number of occupants within certain occupancies, the level at which that triggers the need for separate sex facilities has been increased through this chart that's been incorporated into the amendments to the code.
Thank you. Ms. Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the main electrical disconnects labeling, it's on page 43, 605.3.1.2. Can I talk to you today a little bit? Is that stricter requirement or a less strict requirement on the electrical code, on that particular, you were going to check and see, do you know?
Sorry. John, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe that language is consistent with what the fire districts have recommended in terms of implementing that requirement.
That's correct.
That is correct, it is.
And it's, it's just an attempt, I believe, to clarify and, and be more readily identified. The code says that the main, the electrical disconnect needs to be identified. It's not clear in how it's identified, so I believe that amendment is made simply to clarify and so that the identification is consistent in all occupancies.
And, so I guess to use Mr. Marriott's words, that has not been compromised in this particular. There have been compromises made through these task forces in our building code, and that one has not been. It is staying as strict as it is in the national code, is that correct?
That's correct.
Electrical? So, there's been no compromise there?
That's correct.
Okay. I have nothing else.
Any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing? I want to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill 04-2010, an ordinance repealing and reenacting certain sections of Chapter Five of the Code of Laws and adopting the 2006 International Codes by reference on second reading, and that it be effective August 1st, 2010 with the following condition. One, on page 36, Section 6A of the bill, the first sentence to be changed, read as follows. The International Fire Code 2006 Edition is hereby adopted by reference and incorporated into the article as though fully set forth herein as the Fire Code of the City of Wheat Ridge.
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Discussion on the main motion? Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the mayor. When I asked the mayor to set up the task force, we had some problems when we passed the 2003 IBC
the 2003 IBC code. And I wanted to slow this down and take a look at what we were doing. The bathrooms, you know, new construction's new construction, so I have no problem with that. But where we have a problem is with all the old buildings that we have here in Wheat Ridge, and we cannot force the new codes on some of these buildings, so we've got to show flexibility, and I think this is a good way to do it. With the fees, I don't think we should gouge the residents. I think that what we're after is for them to remodel their business or to remodel their home, and I think if we get too excessive in the fees, it will not allow that to happen because that's where you're going to have your unsafe conditions by people not getting a permit and hiring somebody that will do the work without a permit, and I think that's a problem. I do think, over time, some of our fees have been excessive. But the most important thing, I think this brings us back in line on where we need to have it for the residents of Wheat Ridge to do specific things, especially with some of the older buildings that we have, and I'm extremely pleased because this does show And I'd like to thank the mayor for setting up that task force.
Thank you. Ms. Langworthy?
I would just like to make a comment kind of addressing what Kim Calamino had stated in her first about the fences and the retaining walls. I guess what I would recommend is anybody interested in doing that item, even though it does not require a building permit, to come and talk to city staff if they have a question, so they can be at least assured that what they're putting up is correct, so that they don't have to go through the burden of undoing something that has cost them a lot of money in the first place and then have to spend additional money fixing it. I mean, if you, the rules are there that you don't have to get a permit, doesn't mean you can't still come in and request assistance from us so that we can make sure that you're going to do the best job for your property and ensure the least amount of future expenses.
Any other comments before we poll the council? Councilmember Jay?
I, too, have been concerned about the loss of the planning permit on these big items. These areas are in the $1,000 range, and I think it's a disservice to our citizens to not help them look at what could be a costly mistake. I won't be turning down all of the recommendations, but I do want to make note of that, that I am concerned about that. And I, as Tracy did, I would encourage anyone to be careful and consult with our building department.
Mr. Reinhardt?
I'd like to respond to that a little bit from, you know, we always have a balance between protecting people from themselves and providing general customer service and putting those that are capable of taking care of themselves through a process at the city. And I think this was actually a tough compromise for us, but erring on the side of letting the citizens make the decisions for themselves on what to do with their property ultimately brought me around to supporting the elimination of planning permits.
Ms. Berry?
I'm going to go ahead and vote for this, but I am concerned about putting ourselves in a situation where we aren't meeting state statutes. When we were elected, we were, we took an oath to uphold the city charter as well as the state statutes, and so if there's an issue with the state statutes, there are many jurisdictions that have older buildings. It is a tough call, but they seem to be able to work it out so that they can meet the state plumbing codes as well as get development in older buildings. And so, you know, I will be asking the city attorney to look at that issue and, if needed, to come back and do an amendment. If we were going to have to do amendment, we'd have to go through the process of republishing anyway, so I'll go ahead and support this now, but I do want to make sure that we are at least meeting the state statutes.
Mr. Dahl, just wanted to let you know that when this was brought forth, it was Colorado Code Consulting, which is an organization in Colorado that works on daily code conformity within the local jurisdictions, and this chart was a recommendation based on some businesses in the city of Wheat Ridge that tried to remodel and spent thousands of dollars more on remodeling that they didn't have to go through if this chart would have been in place. It's my understanding, based on talking to Steve Thomas, who is known Colorado-wide for his expertise in code consulting, is this was brought forth by his organization. So, at this point, being local control and bringing it added into our code, based on what I've talked to John Schumacher and some other folks within the jurisdictions, that we should be fine on that because it's local control and we're a home rural city. And so, I don't have no problem if they want to look into it, but I'm pretty positive, based on the information I've received, that this is all legal and that to try to change something around at the last minute would just be unnecessary unless we really know for sure.
I'm acquainted with Steve, I've known him for 25 years, and I agree that he knows his stuff. I lobbied those bills when I was at the legislature for CML in the late '90s, and I do know that, as I say there, as I answered earlier, the legislature has gone back and forth a couple times on the degree to which it has been able to assert statewide control over plumbing and building codes. But because that keeps changing, it's, you have to keep checking in on it. I assume Steve has, but I'm pleased to check his work.
Thank you. We have a motion for approval, was seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Councilmember Adams?
That would be good.
Oh, please both.
That's okay, I have a couple of questions, thank you. A couple of things that is in this that I wanted to bring to the attention that I had some little understanding of and seem to have a little more now, and John might be able to clarify. Where did he go? There you are. There's been some discussion in our neighborhood about the ice barrier and whether an ice barrier should be used in all cases, and we're not requiring an ice barrier. This is concerning with roofs, ice barrier, because basically, I guess, maybe our consultants said that we just needed it in the mountains, is that what I'm understanding? Help me with ice barrier.
No, actually, our consultant, Steve Thomas, and his firm, recommended that we maintain the use of the ice dam membrane or the ice barrier.
And so, membrane and the barrier are the same thing?
They are.
So, are we requiring an ice barrier and an ice membrane in this ordinance?
We are.
Unless it's over an unheated area?
Yeah.
That's correct. We have an exception for that.
The other thing that I found that kind of popped out at me, and I talked to Ken a little bit today, was the open flame cooking devices, I guess, is not something that would be real enforceable if it was a single-family dwelling or in a duplex. So, we don't really have a safety problem there, we just do have a safety problem if it's a larger facility, is that what our determination is?
That's correct.
Is that common practice not to concern ourselves with that for homeowners or duplexes?
It is.
Meaning that it didn't have to be, if it's close to combustible material?
That's correct. That's, again, like Councilmember Reinhardt said, it allows people to make use of their property in their own way. The intent of that is to address multifamily and apartment complexes, those sort of things, where you, you know, you're in close proximity to other people and you're not affecting just your property.
Or your family that's in your property, that's your decision.
That's...
Or in your duplex, okay. One other question that isn't in this, that is just a policy question that I wanted our community to know that we will know more, and tell me if I'm correct, whomever was on those committees, I guess all three of you were, Mike and Davis and the mayor, we no longer will be requiring roof inspections, midterm roof inspections, is that correct?
Well, there's, no midroof inspection unless there's a sheathing inspection, correct, Mr. Schumacher?
That's correct.
So, if there's new sheathing on the roof, they'll require an inspection, then the final inspection on the roof.
Okay, and that was just for clarification. Okay, I have nothing else. Thank you.
We have a motion to approve Council Bill 04-2010, it was seconded with no amendments. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item three is Council Bill 05-2010. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Reinhardt?
I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 05-2010, an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 5 and 21 of the Code of Laws of the City of Wheat Ridge concerning the licensing of contractors.
Would the city clerk please assign a ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 05-2010 will be assigned, ordinance number 1461.
Thank you. Staff presentation on this?
The ordinance is to clarify a few ambiguities that exist in the current ordinance and to consolidate some of the contractor licenses into one Class 4 license. It is also to separate public works licenses from standard building contractor licenses.
Thank you. Do we have anybody from the public who'd like to speak on item number three? Seeing that, we'll move on to council questions and discussion. Any questions from council or discussion? Mr. Reinhardt?
Motion.
Well, I have to close the public hearing first.
No.
Seeing that, we'll close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 5-2010, an ordinance amending certain sections of the Chapters 5 and 21 of the Code of Laws concerning the licensing of contractors on second reading, and that it take effect on August 1st, 2010.
Second?
We have a motion to approve Council Bill 05-2010. Is everybody on the right page? Seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion on the motion? Okay, we're voting on item three, Council Bill 05-2010. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item four is Council Bill 07-2010. I want to open the public hearing. Councilmember Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 07-2010, an ordinance approving the sale of designated parkland near the intersection of West 38th Avenue and Kipling Street, and in connection therewith, and approving an agreement.
Would the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 07-2010 will be assigned, ordinance number 1462.
Thank you. Did you want to read the executive summary or is there a staff presentation?
There's not a specific staff presentation, I can't explain the ordinance, or you can read the executive summary.
Okay, either one. You want to read the executive summary first?
Sure, that's fine. A master plan for the park property located at 38th and Kipling was completed and approved in 2008. The park master plan addressed the actual park design as well as accommodated the parking lot deficiency of the Apple Ridge Cafe located on the southeast corner of 38th and Kipling. The park master plan included a pedestrian bike trail along Kipling Street. However, there is insufficient Kipling right-of-way adjacent to the Apple Ridge Cafe to extend the trail to 38th Avenue. Acquisition of the property from the restaurant site would allow construction of the trail and construction and connection and provide continuity to 38th Avenue. The restaurant site is not large enough to meet the restaurant's parking needs or provide convenient access to their trash dumpster. The city has accommodated this business need for many years through a license agreement for the use of park property south of the restaurant site for the trash truck access. Selling a portion of the park property to the restaurant owner while buying a portion of the restaurant site along Kipling would provide a permanent solution concerning the restaurant parking issue and would allow the city to construct the trail on 38th Avenue.
Do you want to add anything to that? Councilmember Joyce Manwaring?
I would just add the detail that the owner is purchasing 11,431 square feet of park property, and the city will receive Kipling right-of-way in the amount of 4,572 square feet, and in exchange, the city will construct a new addition to the restaurant parking lot.
Thank you. We'll move on to the public. Is there anybody here to speak on item four, Council Bill 07-2010? Seeing that, we'll move on to council questions and discussion. Do we have any council questions or discussion? I want to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 07-2010, approving the sale of designated parkland near the intersection of West 38th Avenue and Kipling Street, and in connection therewith, and approving an agreement on second reading and it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
No.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
And the motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Sorry, Joyce, to call you Councilmember Joyce, we got too many Joices and Karens and everybody else.
All right.
The next item on the agenda is item five, Resolution 15-2010. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Demont?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 15-2010, a resolution considering a special use permit to allow a major auto repair facility in a commercial one-zone district. Do you want me to read? The property located at 4395 Xenon Street is currently vacant with no improvements. The applicant is proposing to build a one-story building approximately 5,432 square feet in size to provide auto and diesel pickup truck repair. The building will have nine service bays with overhead doors. One bay will serve as a state-certified diesel emissions testing facility for diesel engine pickups. In addition, the structure will have areas for administrative offices, waiting room, reception, and sales counter, restrooms, and storage. The property in question is Zoned Commercial 1, which allows a broad range of commercial uses, including restaurants, retail establishments, and light automotive repair facilities as permitted uses. Drive-through facilities, motor fueling stations, and heavy automotive repair facilities are examples of uses that are only allowed through approval of a special use permit. Special uses are discretionary uses which, if properly designed, developed, operated, and maintained, should have little effect on the property or area of the request. The primary purpose of the special use process is to ensure the impacts related to the design and operations, the street system, and public services and facilities have the ability to be in compliance with the special use criteria. The criteria are designed to mitigate potential negative impacts associated with the use.
Thank you. If you're here tonight to speak on this agenda, item or you're a staff member, please stand if I need to swear you in. So, please stand if you're the applicant, public, or staff, raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in this issue? Please say, "I do."
Thank you.
That'll save us some time. Move on to staff presentation. Adam, would you mind turning the podium a little bit towards the council so people will generally talk to council versus the... Thank you very much.
There's nothing on the screens here yet either.
There's nothing on your screens either?
Okay, it's 8:10, we're going to take a five-minute break, it's to 8:15.
Thank you. We're going to go ahead and reconvene, and we'll go with Adam. It always takes you exactly five minutes to get it written again.
I don't know what it is.
Someone, please, close the door in the back. I'd appreciate it if they can just close the door. Thanks.
All right. My name is Adam Tiez, T-I-E-T-Z. I am a planner in the Community Development Department. Council Resolution Number 15 is a hearing for special use permit, case Number SUP 10-03, located at 4395 Xenon, for a request to allow for a major auto repair facility. As mentioned previously, the property is located on property that is Zone C1 in this aerial photograph of the zoning overlay. The property is outlined in red. You can see it is currently vacant, and it's kind of hard to see through the overlay, but there is an irrigation ditch that does run along the western side of the property. It is also located fairly close to the intersections of 44th, West 44th Avenue, Youngfield Street, Xenon Street, Interstate I-70, Interstate 70, and then further to the east is Ward Road, and then the eastbound Interstate 70 on and off ramps. You can see here, because of its location in a highly traveled and heavily traffic area, that a lot of the properties along the commercial corridors are zoned commercially. There is also a mix of residential and agricultural uses further to the south along Xenon. The C1 Zone District allows for minor auto repair facilities, auto repair and maintenance facilities, banks, financial institutions, sit-down restaurants, assembly halls, 24-hour grocery or convenience stores, and other typical higher intensity uses, as it is our general commercial Zone District, and does allow for those types of uses. Some of the special uses allowed are schools, auto repair facilities, drive-through restaurants, and gas stations, and those are primarily special uses to, essentially, to give staff some, to give staff criteria to review these uses, to see if there would be any potential negative impacts that would be greater than what is allowed already for that Zone District. There is a difference between minor and major auto repair facilities. Minor auto repair facilities are more for your typical maintenance type items, tune-ups, other things such as radio installation, upholstery, alignment, things like that, whereas major is more of your engine repairs, transmission repair facilities, exhaust, and that is what the applicant is proposing. They do have a large amount of their business that is minor auto repair, but there was a few uses that they did have that would have, that tip it over into that major category, and that's some exhaust repair, some auto, or excuse me, some exhaust repair, some engine repair, things of that nature. They also will have a state-certified diesel engine testing facility. One thing that is not allowed is to have service or repair or maintenance of semi-trucks. So when we say diesel emissions testing and diesel engine truck repairs, it does not include that for tractor semi-trucks. The property, again, here is outlined in yellow. This is a little more zoomed out. Just, this kind of gives you a, kind of gives you a look at the area and its commercial uses. You can see that there's quite a bit of commercial uses in the Zone District, or in the area. The red ones are zoned and used commercially, whereas the red lots or parcels are properties that may have a different zoning. Typically, these ones in the orange are agricultural, but they are used for some sort of commercial use in one form or another. Here, we'll go through a little series of site photographs. This is actually taken from eastbound I-70, looking towards the site, towards the intersection of Xenon, or excuse me, Youngfield and West 44th Avenue. Again, this is looking east across the site, pretty much directly looking towards 44th Avenue through the break in the trees. Again, this is from I-70, here at the intersection of Xenon, West 44th, and Youngfield. So you can see that it's at a pretty highly visible corner. Here is looking from, looking to the west across the site, and then looking east again across the site from the underpass at I-70 and West 44th. And then here is a site looking to the west, towards I-70 and Youngfield and West 44th, and then down Xenon. Through this, through the process, the applicant has gone through several redesigns of the site based on several concerns that were raised from the neighborhood and from staff. This was the original proposal that the applicant had brought in, and as stated before, there is proposed to be nine overhead doors and service bays at this use. With this original plan, what they had proposed to do is have two entrances onto Xenon, one up here where my cursor is, to access parking for the office area, which was located on the north side of the building, right here, and then also to access the five service bays on this, on the west side of the building. They also had a access along Xenon for four of the bays. When this was proposed, the staff had felt pretty seriously about having four service bays along Xenon Street, and then also the access cut was too wide, and there was some pretty significant design issues as far as not meeting the Architectural and Site Design Manual. So through that, well, and here are some elevations of that. This right, this top elevation is the west elevation with the five bays. The second elevation is the north elevation, which would have been the office, the admin areas, the sales counter, restrooms, things like that. It was constructed primarily out of metal, which is not allowed by the Architectural and Site Design Manual. Then also here is the, the third elevation is that would have been the elevation that faced Xenon Street, and then the last elevation was the elevation that would have faced to the south. Again, there was both concerns from staff and the neighborhood, raised both through neighborhood meetings and in the 10-day posting period. In the 10-day posting period, we received eight separate letters of objection, and then we also got a petition that was signed by 48 people from as far as a couple blocks away that had concerns over traffic on Xenon, the signage that was proposed, groundwater issues, is that there is a fairly high groundwater table there, the building design setbacks. Again, the ditch was a concern that traverses the property, air and noise pollution, the drainage, and the site design. Through the process of listening to the neighbors' comments, listening to the staff's comments, the applicants came back and significantly redesigned the site. They cut the accesses from two down to one, were able to provide all parking on the site on the north side of the building. They reoriented it so none of the service bays were facing Xenon Street, and they reoriented it so the office and sales component of the business faced Xenon Street to make it more compatible with the surrounding commercial and residential uses in the area. Here is the proposed site on the actual aerial photograph. They also have proposed pretty significant landscaping and some, and some significant screening to also accommodate some of the concerns that were addressed by the property owners in the surrounding area. This is the new proposed elevations. The top one is the north elevation, which would face towards what would be 44th Avenue. The second elevation is now the elevation that faces Xenon Street. It significantly has, it has a significant amount of transparency, which is a requirement of the Architectural and Site Design Manual. It's constructed primarily out of stone with only metal accents. There's also green walls proposed on all of the elevations, actually, which are essentially walls where plants grow up and are part of the wall. And it also has a more appropriate roof line that mimics those and is less intense than what would be a 22-foot roof. So this roof line is a little bit more indicative of what's around it. The third is the southern elevation, which will be screened on the south by a six-foot wall that has been proposed. And then the western elevation, here is the last one here, and again, you can see it's got some green walls and it's got some stone wrapped around it onto the back. So after the redesign, staff took a look at the neighborhood concerns and our previous concerns, and then compared them with what applicants had done. In our analysis, obviously, major auto pair and maintenance facilities must go through the special use permit process. However, if the applicant would take away some of those things that he did, such as exhaust work, and some of the engine work that he does, the diesel emissions, he could actually build this facility without having to go through any process at all. So really, he's just asking the special use for a few extra uses, which is part of his business, as he does, already does have a business up in Arvada at 54th and Ward Road, which is currently a four-bay facility. Also, in our analysis, we did recognize that the applicant had addressed several of the neighborhood concerns, and did a fair job of taking a look at those and trying his best to mitigate those. In the analysis, he does meet all of the development standards for the lots, or as it is proposed, with the current site plan that he has proposed. The landscaping is at 22.2 percent, or excuse me, 20.2 percent. He's only required to do 20. His front setback, this is in one of our architectural overlay areas in the Architectural and Site Design Manual. It's in the contemporary overlay area, which requires buildings to be pushed towards the street, and it's, you can build anywhere from zero to 20 feet. They've got their, the front of their building set at 20, 20 feet. The side setbacks are five feet, and they've got respectively those at 60 and 34 feet. The rear is 10 feet, and he has had it 21. The max height is 50. He's proposing 24. The parking that's required would be 24 spaces. The parking that's required would be 24 spaces, and they have 25. Further analysis and some of the issues that were raised by the neighborhoods, obviously, traffic is a big concern. Our Public Works did have a chance to take a look at this. Xenon was constructed as a local street, and with the proposed amount of traffic that is going to be increased by this facility being on-site, it wouldn't significantly impact the street, and the street would be able to handle all traffic that's created from it. One thing that the applicant did provide for us is he provided for us a traffic count or kind of a sheet that showed us what type of numbers, or what are the numbers, types of cars he looks at every day, or the number of cars he looks at every day. At his current facility with a four-bay, he sees about, on average, about five to six vehicles per day. So we can assume that if he doubles his bays to nine, it'll go up probably 50% as well. So based on that, we had figured that it would be no more than 12 to 15 trips per day that were created because of this. And the traffic created from a single-family home is 10, so you can see that it's not significantly more than a single-family home. Another issue was the noise coming from the facility. The applicant has proposed to close and work with all bay doors closed, including the diesel emissions bay, to reduce the noise. Air quality concerns from the diesel emissions testing was also a concern. Those are, since it is going to be a state-certified diesel emissions testing facility, it does have to meet all state air quality standards. So both the facility itself, the equipment that's used, is tested on a regular basis by the state to ensure that pollutants aren't being let out into the air that shouldn't be there. So they will have to abide by the state's regulations on that. There was some concerns with contaminants seeping into the water, or seeping into the groundwater. And as said before, all work done on vehicles will be done inside, in the interior of the facility. Any spills or anything that's gathered on the floor of the facility will be cleansed with appropriate and non-toxic materials, and then it'll also be required to go in through a required sand trap, which will take those, and those also have to have a regular maintenance schedule to ensure that they're performing to their abilities. Stormwater runoff was one of the concerns that was addressed by some of the neighbors. The applicant is proposing, on the north side of the facility, to have some porous pavement for some retention in water quality. Based on this, it has to be designed properly and based on preliminary designs. Our Public Works does feel that the site will both be able to accommodate the facilities and, if designed properly, should function so that it actually will improve the stormwater runoff than it currently is. There was concerns over the highway sign. The facility is located within one-quarter mile of the interstate, as we all saw in the aerial photographs. Any business that is located within one-quarter mile of the interstate is allowed to have a sign that's up to 50 feet high to advertise to interstate traffic. The applicants are proposing to have a 40-foot sign, so it is 10 feet shorter than what they are allowed. There was concerns with the ditch that traverses the property, which renders the northwest portion of the property essentially useless, as no permanent structures can be built in it. The applicants have spoken with the ditch company. The ditch company has approved plans to pipe and bury the ditch, and there will have to be a maintenance plan with the ditch company to ensure that the water continues to flow at its historic rates through there. And then there was also, of course, designs or issues and impacts with the original designs. And as we went through those elevations in site design and the site plan, you were able to see how they addressed and mitigated some of those issues. So based on this, staff is recommending approval of a special use permit to allow for a major auto repair facility in the C1 Zone District. And for the reasons being that the special use meets all applicable criteria that is required in Section 26114 of the City of Wheat Ridge Code of Laws. There will be no detrimental effect on health, safety, or welfare, or convenience to the public in the area. The applicant has made an attempt to mitigate all impacts and concerns addressed in the letters of objection, neighborhood comments, and from staff comments. The special use will not create any adverse impacts that are greater than allowed under the existing zoning on the property. There will be no impact on the light, air, water to the adjacent property owners. The special use will not create or contribute to blight in the neighborhood and will not overburden the capacities of the existing streets, parks, schools, or other public facilities and services. The proposed facility is in substantial compliance with the Architectural and Site Design Manual. And finally, given the unusual shape of the property and other encumbrances on the property, other development opportunities would be difficult with the following conditions. The special use permit be prescribed to the property and may be inherited. Proof of all state of Colorado certificates pertaining to things such as the air quality runoff, those things, be submitted along with building permits, and that the site be developed in compliance with Exhibit 6 to 9 in your council packets, which were also the site plan and elevations that we reviewed up here tonight.
Thank you. We'll move on to the applicant. Please step forward and spell your name if you'd like to make any presentations. Please state your address and/or your city.
Rich Maher, M-A-H-E-R. I live at 6764 West 98th Circle in Westminster. I'm one of the owners, performance-wise. We're currently up in 5785 Ward Road. I've been there about six years. So as we started this whole process, we took all the neighbors' comments, and we really wanted to live with, we want to be good neighbors with all the people there, and we appreciate all their concerns that they had. So that's why we've done all this redesigning and redeveloping of the building. The big thing was that diesel, you automatically think of semi-trucks, and we don't do that. We use the truck that you tow your camper with, your boat with, and that's the type of vehicles we work on. Even the diesel automotives, like Audis and Volkswagens, that type of stuff. So diesel can be construed as this big thing, and that's not what we do there. We've never done that. You know, we need a special use permit to pull a transmission and do a clutch, and that's the type of thing we do. An engine repair to pull a head off an engine, stuff like that. Most of our work is belts, tune-ups, lubrication services, general maintenance of vehicles. We don't do tires, stuff like that, don't do windshields, just the major maintenance of all these vehicles. We make a promise to the city and all the neighbors in that area, the way the building designed with a no-ripe turn lane going down Xenon Street, that we will tell all our customers not to go down that street, and all test drives must be taken down 44th Avenue to all our employees.
Please, no comments from the crowd as he speaks.
Our current hours of operation, we operate Monday through Friday from 7:30 to 5:00. We don't work on weekends. We do enough business where we don't need to be there on the weekends. And just one more thing, and then I think it'd be great for the City of Wheat Ridge to boost in your sales tax revenue. And by we've been in Arvada, we contribute to a lot of the schools, and we like to be involved with the community and help the community in any way we can. So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda will be public comment. There will not be a time limit tonight on individual speakers during public comment on this agenda item, but I do ask that you keep your comments germane to the subject. In an effort to move the meeting along, since decisions need to be made, you may state that you agree or disagree with the previous speaker. This is a city council business meeting, so please no cheering, booing, clapping, or impugning of motives. Please treat all speakers as you would like to be treated. So please step forward if you'd like to speak under public comment. Please spell your last name for the record and give us your city and/or address. You can just form a line if you want along the wall if you're here to speak on this item. I'll get him back up. Please step forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mary Strohmeier.
Can you bring the mic down a little bit? Thank you.
S-T-R-O-H-M-E-Y-E-R, 4320 Xenon Street, Wheat Ridge.
Oh, you can bring it down a little bit, the mic. There you go. There you can hear you.
I didn't know I was tall. My husband and I moved our family into that neighborhood over 30 years ago. It's a quiet, peaceful, family-oriented neighborhood. It's been that way for years. We've really enjoyed living there. It's kind of shocking to me that you want to move a facility like that to my neighborhood. I kind of wonder how you would feel if somebody moved that next door to you. There's a street, Xenon Street and 44th. There's a sign that says "No Left Turn." Every day, I'm behind vehicles that are making left turns onto 44th. I come home from work down 44th Avenue going eastbound. When I try to turn right onto Xenon Street, there are cars turning right on a red light off of Youngfield, and I've almost been hit several times. People don't follow signage. Our traffic is a big issue on that street. If you try to make a left turn from 42nd Street onto Youngfield, you can wait for very long periods of time. I've actually driven all the way around to Kipling trying to get out. This isn't going to help the situation at all. I really thought when they set up that intersection, they wanted to get rid of the residents on Xenon Street. Really, we have very little access as it is. That's all.
Thank you. Please step forward if you'd like to make any comments.
My name is Trish Tillie, T-I-L-L-Y, and I live at 4322 Xenon. I agree with everything that Mrs. Strohmeier said, but I also would like to address the fact that we have no sidewalks on Xenon. So if there's anybody who is parking on Xenon, and the increased traffic, even though they may say it's only a few cars, anybody who walks up and down Xenon, so children, anybody out walking their dogs, anybody just out for a walk, they're in the street. So I'm worried about increased traffic, hitting pedestrians. I also agree that both of the exits from Xenon and 42nd onto Youngfield and 44th, it's just, it's too difficult to get in and out of that little neighborhood. And so I think a big business like this there is just too big for our little neighborhood and all of the traffic.
Cindy Beckfeld, B-E-C-K-F-E-L-D, live at 4365 Xenon. I am against the thing. I live three houses down from them, and I have driven by the site up on Ward. All the bays were open. They were working out in the parking lot, so I don't know how they can say all the bays are going to be closed on Xenon. And I don't want to have the spill. I don't want to have the noise. We have cars speeding up and down the street all day long. There's no speed limit sign on there. There's no people that's concerned about the speed. I have been out walking my dog down to my parents' house and almost got hit by speeding delivery trucks and trash trucks. I now drive down there. We have kids that play in the street. It's a residential street. We have kids that play out in the street. They play basketball out in the street. They ride their bikes up and down the street. It's an accident right now, looking for a place to happen. If they have five cars up at their old place a day, if they have eight bays here, nine bays here, it's going to double, triple how many people's there. It's going to double and triple the cars. Other businesses have said they're going to stop their customers from coming down Xenon. You see, I'm coming down Xenon and turning into these companies every single day at a high rate of speed. It's just a matter of time before something happens on Xenon. We have kids walking, parents walking their kids from the school in the summer. They walk their kids to the school and home from the school, walking down the street. Again, I say, it's just a time. We don't need more speeding cars and more speeding delivery cars going up and down that street. The street cannot handle the traffic. Thank you.
Hi, Council. My name is Greg Boom, B-O-O-M, and I own two pieces of property. I own 4225 Vivian Street, and I also own 4200 Xenon Street. So I've got two properties that this will affect. 4200 Xenon Street's agricultural. I have horses on the property. I'm concerned about traffic issues as far as people coming in and out. I know it'll greatly increase traffic. With no left turn coming off of Xenon onto 44th, people will have to come down through past the 4200 Xenon property. There's no real good access through there. It's hard to get in and out. The other thing that I'm concerned about is we're on well waters there. I just re-drilled the 4200 Xenon Street well. It was $7,500 to re-drill it. I looked into city water. It's $34,000 per piece of property to do any type of city water. If the contamination got into the well or into the ground, it would greatly affect the neighborhood. It's just something we couldn't deal with. A lot of people couldn't even afford to do anything like that. I'm worried about the noise. I know, I own three diesel trucks myself. I have two 1-ton trucks and one 3/4-ton truck. I know what the diesel emissions is. They run it on a big rollers. They dyno it. They run it up to 2,500 RPM or higher, and it puts out a lot of smoke, a lot of pollution, and a lot of noise. I've seen them test my trucks. I take it to a facility and have it done. I would not use this facility with my trucks because I don't want it there. This is my neighborhood. I've lived there for 20 years with my wife and me, and we have no plans on moving. So it's just really frustrating to see something like this come into our neighborhood where we have families and residents. I own a maintenance facility. I'm an aircraft mechanic. I do a lot of aircraft repairs. I'm up at the airport. I know what it is to have spill response plans to meet all the FAA requirements, to meet all the requirements of the airport facilities and stuff like that. It is hard to do. You can say you're going to do all this stuff, but if they're pulling a fuel tank or doing something and they spill fuel and it goes into the ditch system, or any type of water contamination, it's going to really cause some problems. I think it'd be neat if they did something else, maybe a coffee shop, or, you know, some small facility or something. But this is just a little larger than what I think our neighborhood needs. I just, I don't think it'll work well for us, and I really disapprove it.
Hi, my name is Catherine Murphy, M-U-R-P-H-Y, and I live at 12700 West 42nd Avenue. We are one of two houses that are on that street, and we put up with an extreme amount of traffic. The Head Start School was built in across the street from us. Our street is very narrow. It really isn't a two-lane street. Parents do not use the parking lot most of the time. They pull up in front of the school, and they line up down the street. They get their kids out on the street side instead of the sidewalk side. Cars come down. I have seen them drive onto my property to get around these cars. I don't feel that the traffic flow is going to be very good for our neighborhood. I don't believe the lighting. Lighting has become an extreme issue in our neighborhood. We used to be a quiet neighborhood. My husband's family has owned this property for many, many years. They're one of the, probably the original families down there, and I am very much against it. I agree with everything that has been said and more. And I would really hope that you folks would try and consider how you would feel if you lived in a neighborhood where something like this moved in. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ray Strohmeier, 4320 Xenon Street. My concern is the water. That ditch that they're going to straddle goes clear down the valley. Anything get into that? The water is contaminated from that point clear down to Marshall Street for every irrigation ditch in the whole area. The groundwater there, we have surface water at six feet, and it all runs to the river. We all have wells. We don't need any contamination at all. We don't even need the chance to have contamination. And I'm thoroughly against it.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak on this item? Please step forward.
My name is Scott Mefford, M.E.F.F.O.R.D. My home is located at 4380 Xenon Street. That is immediately across the street from the proposed facility, so we look out at it. I have concerns with this facility really in two regards. One, with some physical concerns, some of which have been talked about here already tonight, and some concerns regarding the planning process and how this relates to the Wheat Ridge Comp Plan that I know you all have worked on so hard and are much more familiar with than me. The first regarding the physical issues. I submitted a fairly detailed letter during the public response period explaining and documenting some of the concerns. And we really don't have time tonight here, I don't think, to go through all of those in detail. I think that's in the record, and I hope that you've had the opportunity to take a look at that, or staff has. But two things in particular that I think are of concern. The traffic issues you've heard a great deal about tonight. The difficulties with the turn restrictions on Xenon and Forty-Fourth. I think that's a serious issue. But in addition to that, the groundwater issues, the groundwater contamination issues are something that I believe is a serious concern and not something that needs to be or can be overlooked. Certainly in a parking lot like this, it's not just oil and grease that gets into the parking lot. Mag chloride, other kinds of salts, de-icers that are put onto the parking lot. All of those materials are going to be kept onsite and migrate down into the groundwater either through the permeable pavement, which was discussed in the letter that we sent in, or through the collection of those materials and the infiltration gallery or infiltration pond, which is, I believe, located on the north end of the prospect, project. All of the salts, all of the oils collected off the parking lot to go into there are going to go relatively immediately into the groundwater system because the groundwater is shallow in this area. There's not forty feet of dry soil for that to penetrate through to absorb some of those contaminants. There's a great deal, quite a number of domestic wells in this area, you've heard. And that's a very serious concern, something that needs to be looked at with some considerable degree of detail. Since time is limited, I won't talk anymore about the physical concerns. As I indicated, I would like to talk a little bit about how this fits into your planning process. And you'll have to excuse me if I don't, I don't really understand your planning process nearly as well as I'm sure many others here do. But I purchased the property in late January. I've lived in Wheat Ridge, one location or another, most of my life. But this particular home I just purchased in January. As part of my diligence, my wife talked to the city, and I reviewed the comprehensive plan, the envisioned Wheat Ridge study, to better understand what was allowed on our property and what was allowed across the street. And nothing came up about this diesel repair facility, and I assume that maybe that hadn't been submitted to the city yet at the time that we talked to them. But in reviewing the Comp Plan, in Appendix D, there's a section that specifically deals with the area around Forty-Fourth and Youngfield. And this is identified as the West Forty-Fourth Avenue Road, Ward Road Redevelopment Plan. And there's a map included titled "The Urban Renewal Area Land Use." And I, again, suspect that many of you are familiar with this. This is right out of your planning documents in Appendix D. This presents the framework within which, I understand, the city would like to see this area be redeveloped. The lot at 4395 Xenon is clearly identified on this plan as being an area in which small office and business center uses are envisioned. This seemed to be, to me, doing my diligence work, trying to decide whether to buy this property, this seemed to be a reasonable use for that land. Something that we could live with, something that we wouldn't mind living next to. But from our perspective, there's a big difference between what we see in the Comp Plan here as a small office building and major automotive repair facility. The automotive repair facility, I don't have anything against them, but it's more of an industrial-type use, it seems to me. We look at the sides of the building, it looks more like a C-dot facility than it does something that's going to fit into a residential neighborhood. And this does open into a residential neighborhood. If this lot opened and had access off Forty-Fourth, off the commercial areas on Forty-Fourth, it may be different. But this opens onto and has the only access is onto a residential road, which is Xenon Street. The main body of the Comp Plan, it also discusses strategies for implementation to the plan. Discusses the problems with the existing commercial zoning, and the plan identifies the existing commercial zoning as a one-size-fits-all 1950s-style zoning. That's not my interpretation of the plan. That's what the plan says. Under the heading "Commercial Zoning," it specifically states, "Additionally, certain allowed uses, allowed uses may not be appropriate in target redevelopment areas, such as automotive and drive-through facilities." The plan specifically calls out automotive facilities as being potentially inappropriate in C1-type zonings. Yet here we're looking at installing one on a small property. It's only a half an acre property. This is not a full acre. It's only a half an acre in size, and it doesn't even front onto the Forty-Fourth Avenue Business Thoroughfare. Elsewhere in the Comp Plan, it calls for the need for commercial properties to fit in to the neighborhood and complement the neighborhood. And I would argue that this doesn't fit into the residential neighborhood. It still looks like and appears to be, and operates as a more industrial-type facility. The plan also calls for public input to assure the planning is sensitive to the interests of the neighborhood. And I think that's what we're seeing here tonight. I think that's what all these people are here for. Finally, regarding the West Forty-Fourth Avenue Redevelopment Plan, I think there is a lot of headway being made there. There's really a lot of nice homes in this neighborhood. The home I purchased was a rental property, and for many years was, as I understand it, in need of repair. But the seller completely refurbished the house so that he could upgrade it for sale. And I purchased it, and now it's a private home. It's not a rental. And it's fixed up, and it's been completely refurbished. It's my understanding that this is one of the goals of the redevelopment process. And I think it's this kind of investment in the neighborhood that you want, not the kind that's likely to profit, to cause less reinvestment in the neighborhood, which might result from kind of industrial-type uses, even though it's a C1 use, I understand, but it looks more industrial. So finally, the Comp Plan serves a purpose only if it's followed. And you have the opportunity tonight, through the special use permitting process, to uphold the Comp Plan or to disregard it. The Wheat Ridge Comp Plan, I believe, is both innovative, and it's really unique in a lot of ways, compared to other Comp Plans, at least that I've seen. And it's very complete. And I would hope that you vote to observe the recommendations in the Comp Plan and the concerns of the residents of the Xenon Street area. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else who'd like to speak on a public comment? Please step forward.
I'm Donna Mefford. I reside at, M.E.F.F.O.R.D., and I reside at 4380 Xenon Street. And we just moved in, and I have a small business. I'm a massage therapist. And my area just opens up right across the street. I love my business there, working with all the athletes and the teachers at Wheat Ridge High School. And it's been kind of a shock to have this go across the street, and I'm against it just for the traffic and for all the reasons stated ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Virginia Claier, C.L.A.I.R., and I'm simply going to read two letters that have been submitted by residents in the neighborhood who could not be here tonight. The first letter is from Dana and Janice Thompson. That's T.H.O.M.P.S.O.N., and they reside at 12290 West Forty-Second Avenue in Wheat Ridge. "To the Mayor and City Council, due to a funeral today, we are unable to attend tonight's meeting. There are numerous reasons we are opposed to this special use, and we will list a few of them. Number one, a special use permit is just that, special. These permits should not be given out without a clear need for that particular use in a particular zone category. This use should also be one that will not be detrimental to the surrounding land uses. This particular special use does not fall into this category as we see it. Number two, the April 25, 2010, Hub the Mayor stated that the new mixed-use zoning code would encourage development that is walkable, compact, and contains a mix of land uses. It is to create a balanced mix of land uses that will promote long-term economic growth for the community. Yes, this use is walkable for a few homeowners who might want to have their vehicles repaired here. It is definitely compact, but it is not, does not promote, but it does promote long-term economic growth for the community. We think not. The impact to the surrounding land uses will only encourage a loss of land values and an undue impact on a residential street. It can also have long-term effects on the revitalization of the area. Number three, impact to Xenon Street and West Forty-Second Avenue and Xenon will be beyond words. The long-range plan for Xenon Street and Forty-Fourth Avenue is to close off the street and have traffic exit from Xenon Street onto Forty-Second and Youngfield Street. This means commercial traffic on a residential street. Until that time, traffic, no matter what the developer says, will use either Forty-Fourth Xenon or Forty-Second and Youngfield as the access to this development. Four, after a major investment is made by this owner, the use established with a special use permit will probably be next to impossible to not allow future special use permits to continue for this use or a rezoning application to continue said use. Number five, it is our hope that you do not think a precedent was set in this neighborhood by the approval of a special use permit for the doggy daycare. We were opposed to the issuance of that permit. Now we have a request for a use with a much more intense impact on the residential neighborhood. The traffic flow for the doggy daycare is not always to and from Xenon, from Forty-Fourth and Xenon, but also traffic uses Forty-Second and Youngfield, thus traveling down a residential street. Number six, will cabela's be built? It's anyone's guess. But for once, the city of Wheat Ridge has an opportunity to begin encouraging development that will encourage a renewal of this end of Wheat Ridge that does not include one more business that deals with vehicles of any kind. We have camper sales lots, camper repair sites, a truck stop, truck tire repair shop, small trailer sales, diesel repair at the truck stop, gas stations. Nice view from I-70, Youngfield, Forty-Fourth Avenue, and Ward Road. One of the better gateways to Wheat Ridge. This area of Wheat Ridge has more than enough auto repair shops to meet the needs of the area. Number seven, this site is near a major irrigation ditch, and the water table is rather close to the surface. Many, if not most, of the homes in this area depend on wells for their domestic water. We are concerned about the detergents used to clean bays, oil, diesel fuels, et cetera, getting into the water table. Yes, the developer can say, and the city can require systems to protect the water, but all of us know these are not fail-safe. Number eight, what impact will this development have when Youngfield Street is improved at this intersection? Number nine, this site will also increase the noise in this neighborhood. We could go on and on, but I hope you see our concern. Now, instead of just asking you to deny this special use, we need to work with the city and come up with a mini-master plan for the area from Tabor Street west to Youngfield, Clear Creek to I-70. This plan would help all land owners, commercial and residential, to know and understand what the future uses will be so they can decide how much they want to invest in their property. We know it is almost unbelievable to many people, to many, that people enjoy living in this part of Wheat Ridge. We have so many amenities that are not found elsewhere in the city. People come from all over to use the green belt that is right in our backyards, so to speak. We have access to shopping, the interstate, schools of all kinds, large lots, horses, trails for walking, biking, and horseback riding. Safe neighborhoods where neighbors know neighbors. So to the City Council, we ask you to deny this special use permit and work with us to improve what is here instead of causing a slow death to the neighborhoods. With decay comes crime. With crime comes more decay and blight for businesses and residential neighborhoods. Letter number two from Rex Winters, 12310 West Forty-Second Avenue, Wheat Ridge. I am opposed to granting this special use permit for two reasons. First, a facility like this would dramatically change the character of an existing commercial neighborhood by allowing the creation of a major automotive repair housing nine large diesel truck bays. It may even deter new commercial development in this area. A facility like this should be located in some other area of Wheat Ridge where there are more diesel-truck-oriented businesses. Second, to locate this facility where proposed would lead to increased diesel-truck traffic along Forty-Fourth Street and along Youngfield Street, causing more traffic congestion on Forty-Fourth Street and Youngfield Street to and from the proposed facility. This would become an inconvenience to everyone else using Forty-Fourth Street and Youngfield Street. Alternative, I would favor the following alternative. The creation of this kind of facility for repairing large diesels could, in my opinion, be located several blocks further east on Forty-Fourth Street, close to the new, under construction, exit ramp from I-70 to Forty-Fourth Street, which also places it near the existing diesel-truck-stop facility, where many of the incoming diesel trucks might more easily access the new facility for repairs. Such location also eliminates the increase in traffic congestion along Forty-Fourth Street and Youngfield Street. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joy Mengele, M.E.N.G.E.L. First name is Joy, J.O.Y. I live at 4350 Xenon. I've lived there well over fifty years, and I agree with everything everybody says, but I'm a little unique in one place. I'm 100 feet southeast of the property that they want, and I'm on a well water, 100 percent. Even a slight contamination is going to go in and get my place in no time flat. And my second concern is, they want to put a sign up forty feet high. I've heard it's five feet by ten feet. That's 300 feet from my house. It's shot in my bedroom window, my living room window. I am very opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Liz Titus, T-I-T-U-S, and I live at 12350 West 42nd Avenue. I'm here on behalf of myself and in support of my neighbors. I've lived in this neighborhood for two years now, and I came from downtown Denver, and I came to this neighborhood for a reason, for a change, to be in Wheat Ridge in an almost, it's a residential but almost agricultural area. It's a very special, almost best-kept secret, I think, in Wheat Ridge. No one sees us back there, and we have a pretty special place. And I'm concerned that approval of the special use permit is going to have a detriment on the condition of our neighborhood. As the staff member said earlier, you know, this is up to the discretion of the council to approve this, and it's up to the applicant in considering this use to make a showing that this is not going to have an adverse impact on the health, welfare, safety of those residing in the neighborhood. Also, the applicant must show that it will not overburden existing streets and have unadverse effects on the traffic. And while I appreciate the city's demonstration, it's hard to imagine, there's been no specific detail set forth as how we're going to protect the groundwater and how we're going to protect not just the few people who have mentioned that they have well water, but almost everyone in the neighborhood has well water. That street is very narrow. I would implore the council members to take a look at how wide it is. There are other commercial entities on, you know, near there, but all of those entities, for the most part, face 44th. This would be the only one that would require access from either 42nd or Xenon Street, which are residential roads. And those, many of those businesses are things that, I think, help improve the neighborhood. We have a meat market, we have a nursery, we have a cat groomer, you know, we have a gas station. These are all small businesses that improve the quality of our neighborhood that people use and then people in the neighborhood use. This special use permit is for a very particular type of commercial business, and it doesn't really give anything to the neighborhood. It only takes away. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dave Amdal, A-M-D-A-H-L, and I live at 4235 Vivian Street. And I am opposed to this permit, if for no other reason other than the air pollution. We live right next to a truck stop. We have trucks sitting there idling 24/7. And anything that would add to this air pollution, I would be against. And I don't know how to really prove this, other than to invite council members to come over to that area during an inversion and smell the air. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anybody else who'd like to speak before we move on to council questions? And we also had the applicant wanted to present, was that true, anymore? Please spell your last name for the record and your address.
My name's Rick Eads, E-A-D-S. Address 6910 West 26th Avenue. I'm the current owner of this property. I've owned it roughly for three years now. I ran numerous things through my mind what to put there. An office building, 8,000 square foot office building. In a two-mile area, we've got over 250,000 square feet of vacant office space, so that wasn't feasible. That would have created more traffic than what we would have wanted in the area. We thought of a liquor store, a small restaurant. Restaurants, you're going to turn over probably 50 to 100 vehicles in a breakfast/lunch menu. So the traffic impact, I don't think is going to be any more in this special use permit than it would on other uses for that area. Other businesses, on Xenon, you've got a headstone place there that they turn off at 44th on Xenon. The property just south of the said property is also zoned commercial. This guy does mechanic work out of his front yard. I've counted 15 vehicles in my lot that I've had to ask him to move because of insurance purposes, with children in that plan in that lot. There's a dog care center. All these businesses, people turn on Xenon. So I don't think the business proposed was going to create any additional traffic. The said residential, in my understanding, is 10 vehicles per day, and what they're proposing, I think, is going to be that or less. So I would be for this. I don't see what else could go there. It'd be great if we could put a park there, but, you know, then what are you going to do? You've got over 100,000 cars going by there? That's no place for a park. Something's going to go in there. So I'm all for this, and I hope the council will pass this. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Chris Ball, B-A-L-L, 19542 West 57th Circle. I work for Rick Eads, owner of the property, as his real estate agent. I also happen to be a customer of these gentlemen. And I guess what I'd like to tell council and mayor is that your process works. This property is Zone C1. These gentlemen have an automotive business. There were some question that your staff raised in an initial inquiry that maybe some of the things they do are major repairs versus minor repairs. And so, as part of that process, it was suggested to go through this public process and have the community have input. And the community has had input, both tonight and through this whole process. And staff has done a great job, really working with the community, working with the applicant, to try to mitigate the concerns that they have. You know, we are here tonight to consider a request for a special use permit, and that request is because there's just some slight differences between some minor work that they do and some major work that they do. And it's just a little bit of semantics written into the code, but it's caused us to come here tonight. And I think this use would be a lot less intensive than many of the other uses that could be on the site. Clearly, it's very difficult to change in your neighborhood if you've been there a long, long time, and there's a lot of emotion that we've heard from some of the neighbors. I think your staff has been very thorough in their review, and the findings and fact that were presented tonight seem to really cover all those bases. One thing that hasn't really been brought up much is the economic development, and that this business will bring both jobs and revenue to the city. And, you know, having done business with these guys in the past, I think Wheat Ridge would be fortunate to have some successful small businessmen like these guys come join your community.
Thank you. Go ahead, and we're going to hear the applicant, then we'll come back to you. Please spell your last name for the record and give us your city or your address.
My name is Brent Allred. Last name is A-L-L-R-E-D. And my address is 940 East 11th Avenue, Brumfield, Colorado. Let's see. Well... I'm just going to use these. Oh, it's not in PowerPoint, huh? Sorry. Okay, as Adam mentioned earlier, this was the original design that we presented at more or less the neighborhood meeting and discussed with the four or five neighbors that were there. And in terms of the design change, can I just sequence this thing, or do I need to open up another? Do I have to open it up each time? Okay. I'll just use the board here. So we turned it around so that the lower end of the building was facing Xenon Street. We took the access off Xenon Street. We moved the access down here, which is across from a commercial property and not across from the residential property that was mentioned earlier. Some of the things that I wanted to highlight here was that we created this buffer, landscape buffer. We also put a screen wall here.
Excuse me, could you go ahead and grab the mic off the podium there, so he can talk, so everybody can hear you? Thank you.
We have the screen wall here on the south side to screen the doors from the south, as well as noise, and I'll address that in just a minute. So giving some more landscape buffer, only having one access, which is up here, was our major thrust, and also creating this portion of the building, which is as lower than Adam has said. Some of the things that are occurring when the vehicles are being worked upon, they're worked upon in the bays, and cleanup occurs in the bay, wash down whatever of the floor that drains into the sand and oil interceptor. And in turn, as Adam mentioned, that goes into, that sand and oil interceptor is a maintained facility. Restaurants have them, they're maintained all the time, it's a very common practice. And any questions concerning that? I understand the Public Works Director is here. It might be addressed to him. So that, after it's cleaned of the contaminants, it then is deposited into the sewer. It doesn't go into the ground after that. The, any of the hazardous materials that might be deemed hazardous will comply strictly with the codes that are pertaining to those, including a reservoir, should there be a spill. The lot itself has a small detention pond here. We have a soils report that indicates the water is at 12 feet. The level of the ditch does not dictate the surface water in the surrounding area, even though it's an active ditch. The water, that detention pond, or retention pond, more accurately said, is about four and a half feet deep, so that gives about a seven and a half foot buffer between that and the high groundwater, which was measured in March. That only serves this area here. The rest of this parking and drainage and any roof drainage goes into this pervious cement, concrete pavement. What is a pervious concrete pavement? It has the ability to percolate water through its surface. It is recommended by the Green Building Council. It is a component that's often used for lead certification. It has the ability of containing microbes, which can feed off any oil residue that might spill from a parked car. Unless it increases the ability of the site to keep water quality control. Everything will be according to the state standards there. We've proposed that the color on the building be the dark color that we are showing here, just for it's, kind of recedes back from the facility. All the lighting will comply with the photometric calculations that will be required at the permit, requiring zero light spill over the property lines. And so that will be very cognitive of those concerns. Noise, in the, after meeting with a number of the neighbors, we spoke with a few acoustical engineers regarding the noise at the existing facility versus what would happen at this facility. Noise is a very interesting engineering phenomena. A lot of it has to do with the masking. The noise that's generated from I-70 will more than make any noise that comes from this facility be insignificant. That can be proved quite readily by any acoustical engineer, if further investigation is required there. Again, it was mentioned to the exhaust of the facility, it will comply completely with Colorado State regulations concerning that exhaust. One of the reasons we put the sound wall or wall here is, sound acts like water. If sprayed, imagine a sound against a wall, it will hit the wall, and the spray will go up, down, around, and so forth. The part that goes up is disseminated into the air, so there is a reduction of sound with any screen wall that is included into a design such as this. And again, Richard mentioned here, we put the access here and pointing the exit egress towards 44th, and as the staff has required, we put a no right turn lane in that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the applicant? Please step forward, and then we'll go back to public comment.
Good evening. My name is Gordon Ballinger, B-A-L-L-I-N-G-E-R. I reside at 11650 Indiana Street in Brumfield, Colorado. I'm the real estate broker that represents the applicant. We began the process over a year ago to look for a site that suited them and suited what they wanted, in a sense of a destination tenant, a destination, not a drive-by, not the high traffic, somebody that wants their services. I specifically drive one of these diesel trucks that I pull a horse trailer with. Last month, I went to have it inspected, and I purposely walked outside the unit. They closed the door, they began work on it, and they do not physically do any work on the vehicle while it's in there being tested. All they do is run it on a dyno. 10 feet away from the facility, I could not hear my truck running on the inside. So I, and the location of the dyno facing away from the residential neighborhood, I think is advantageous. My clients have spent over $25,000 reconfiguring this building, and that's not council or neighbors' problems, but it was in response to council's, to the staff's input and response to the neighborhood meeting, that they do want to be good neighbors, and they do want to run a business which is directly across from another business. And as Mr. Allred said, we have positioned the ingress and egress of this unit to be at the very beginning of Xenon, with a no right turn, across from another commercial. So I would ask council to approve. Thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing, Fomin. I developed a... I developed a, staff mentioned that there are many uses by right for this property. One of them is lubrication, i.e. grease monkey. I developed a grease monkey in Broomfield at 120th and the Old Wadsworth site. The number of vehicles, and I just checked it this week, yeah, last week, the number of vehicles per day is 34 cars per day, and that was last year's numbers. Thank you.
Please play your last name for the record and your address or city.
James Moore, 4280 Xenon Street. I've noticed a pattern here, maybe it's just me, everyone that's in favor of it don't live around there.
I'm Joan Amdal, A-M-D-A-H-L, and I reside at 4235 Vivian Street, Mayor and Council. I would just, I'm not here as a broker, a salesperson, a businesswoman, I'm here as a wife, homemaker, and on behalf of my neighbors on Vivian and Xenon, we just plead with you not to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. My name is Ron Bennett, V-E-N-N-E-T-T-S. I live at 4275 Vivian Street. I was in the trucking business with my father and my brother for over 40 years, and we moved most of the dirt from the big buildings that Coors built on down through the valley. So I am very aware of how much water and fuel is spilled when you have this type of a facility. I am very aware of the amount of water that it takes to clean each one of these pieces, whether it be a big truck or-
Excuse me, could you go ahead and please, could you please face the council when you're addressing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Also, I'm very curious if the amount of tax base that this facility will bring to the city is worth all the problems it's going to bring for my neighbors and myself if they do spill something in there, which I'm sure they will, they, I should not say that, I guess, but being in the trucking business for all those years, I know what does happen, and I'm sure that something will happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Can you, please step forward.
Hello, Mike Tilly, 4322 Xenon Street. You heard from my wife earlier, T-I-L-L-I. I'd like to add one thing to what Jim said about everybody that's against it is from the neighborhood, everybody that's for it, nothing against capitalism, but has an economic interest in this passing, so I would also implore you to reject it.
We've already had speak, ma'am, we're going to go ahead and go on, if you've already spoken once, we need to go on to the next phase. Well, go ahead and ask the questions real quick, and then we'll have staff address them.
Air quality will be tested, and if there is an emergency plan in case there is a spill for those of us on well water.
Okay. Thank you. We'll get those questions answered. Does anybody want to address those comments or questions from staff or the applicant? Air quality testing and spill mitigation?
I can speak to the air quality testing, but not the spill plan. But it is a, it's a state, again, it's a certified diesel emission facility, and the state does have air quality requirements, as previously stated, both the facility itself and the machines that are used to test the equipment do have to meet the certain standards that are set by the state regarding air quality. And obviously, we know that Colorado has some pretty strict regulations on that. And then also, before any of the emissions are released into the atmosphere, they do have to be deemed, not necessarily un-toxic, but safe for the, to be released into the air, so that, and I can't speak for the, you know, a management plan, but I don't know if any of you guys can.
Okay. All right, thank you. Before we move on, is there any more public comment, because we need to go on to council discussion and questions? Public comment or applicant? Yes, sir.
Ms. Brent Allred, I can speak to the plan. It has not been formally drawn up, but we have created plans, we do a lot of fire stations, North Metro Fire and Rescue District Maintenance Facility that was just completed in northwest of here, northeast of here, had a reservoir containment that had to be approved by the state, and the same sort of thing can happen if that's deemed necessary. So it's all contained, should there be a spill, it's contained in this area from any containers that would have toxic materials. That plan will be created and be, we'll apply for it.
Okay. All right, thank you. We're going to move on to council discussion and questions. Councilor Berry?
Thank you. There's a lot of good comments and letters by the citizens, and I think I'd kind of like to ask a few questions about some of the things that maybe haven't been discussed. We are doing a special use here, and if maybe the planning department could address how the comprehensive plan is relative to consideration of a special use request?
Thank you, thank you. The special use permit request is based on the property being zoned C1, as has been presented this evening. When we look at requests to rezone property, that is typically when we look at conformance with the comprehensive plan. Obviously, the comprehensive plan is a very important policy document for the city, one that City Council recently adopted, and I think we're all very pleased with. The comprehensive plan for this area of the city is kind of a mix of things, which is, I think, somewhat reflective of what's out there. Along 44th Avenue, it recommends mixed-use development of a moderate scale. North of 44th Avenue, it recommends regional commercial. And of course, regional commercial further to the west at the Cabela's redevelopment area. So, you know, there's some different things going on in the area, which is reflective of the existing conditions, and the fact that it, you know, has some transitional aspects, whether it be, you know, some obviously well-established and well-loved residential areas, but also some very commercial influences, whether it be I-70 and the various traffic facilities in the area. When we look at a special use permit, though, we don't, aren't specifically directed to look at the comprehensive plan. We're essentially looking to say, does this use have uses that are greater than what another permitted use would be under that C1 zoning? If it does, are there ways that those can be mitigated? So I think the approach that we took to looking at this application was to say, you know, some of the very legitimate issues that were identified by, through the process, whether it be by staff or from the neighbors in the area through that public process, noise, traffic, the air pollution, the water quality issues, which is a bit of a separate issue, but the noise, they're attempting to mitigate through operating the facility in a manner that the doors are closed, and also they made some site modifications so that that diesel testing facility was located in the most inobtrusive portion of the site. The traffic, as has been discussed, we believe, and Tim obviously can comment, is much less impactful than might be required, than might be allowed with other permitted uses, such as restaurants, retail uses, that are used by right under the C1 zoning. So that traffic issue, while, you know, we can certainly understand that the mixing of residential and commercial traffic in that area can cause some people some concern, I think that's a reality that exists and will continue to exist because it's a mixed, it's a mixed area. Some concerns were raised with the sign. I mean, the sign, if it were some other commercial use, and it is what it is, I mean, they're allowed to have a highway-oriented sign under the C1 zoning. So I'd be glad to get into other specific topics, but just in a real general way, I mean, that's, we're trying to look at, are there legitimate issues, and we would acknowledge that there are, that's what the special use permit is designed to address, but can they be mitigated? And I think that's what we've tried to do in bringing this forward to you, is look at some of the operational limitations that we think address those concerns.
Maybe just the summary is because it's not a rezoning, the comprehensive plan isn't, conformance with the comprehensive plan isn't evaluated for the special use, and if it were, you feel like it would probably meet some things, not meet other things, because it is such a transitional use area, is that kind of the summary?
I think that's a very good summary.
Okay. One thing that I know the applicant talked about, they are not going to be open late, I think your hours were just standard business hours, is that correct? One item that was brought up in some of the letters was, well, will the sign be on all night long? So maybe you could address that, that question.
The way Maher, M-A-H-E-R, the way the sign would be positioned, it'd be kind of facing, I guess it'd be northeast and then southwest, not north-south and not east-west, so it's going to be kind of pointed almost to where Cabela's would be, and then over towards I-70 itself, and it would be on. I mean, that's, that would be a major source of us being able to operate and stay established at that location.
Okay. You know, I know that we have standards for non-point source pollution, but do we have any standards in the codes for groundwater protection?
Tim Pirano. The city uses a bunch of various codes and regulations in controlling the stormwater, and one of our main sources, of course, is the urban drainage manuals that we have available to us. So we rely largely on those, as well as some of our own regulations and guidelines established within the city. So our primary source for stormwater regulation is, of course, our urban drainage standards, and then the regulations that we have under our stormwater management program.
So what you're saying is, we mainly have standards that protect surface water, but not anything specific for groundwater?
Correct. And recognizing that there is an interconnection between the two, if we take care of the surface water, we thereby protect the groundwater.
One of the issues in the letter was, you know, concerns with mag chloride and groundwater protection, and we do have a large interstate system and other roads nearby, I would assume that CDOT uses, you know, the same de-icing things that we use, and so there's already a lot of that in, being used in the area, is that correct?
That is correct. In fact, they use a lot more mag chloride, the city uses very little mag chloride, but the state does use a lot of mag chloride, and technically, that is not a prohibited material at this time.
Yeah, I mean, I sympathize with the residents being close to Clear Creek, they're, where the groundwater is higher, so if you're on a well, you have more access to water, but you're also at the bottom of the basin where everything's coming from the top and concentrating down there, so if we're talking groundwater pollution, there's many sources upgrading, if that would, that would also be of consideration, too. It could be a really difficult situation. I had a couple other questions. In one of the letters, they talked about the shallow groundwater and I think it impacting not only, you know, the potential for groundwater contamination, but also the ability to, for the volume for stormwater. I don't recall in the, it's mostly the stormwater treatment or detention is mostly through permeable pavement. Is there a minimum death to groundwater in that design? I assume that we're only, that they've done a preliminary report, and you would look at additional details before final design?
Yes. To date, they've done a minimal amount of work, provided general pre-design for their project. If this is approved and they come in for building permit, they'll have an engineered set of drainage plans that will be reviewed by city staff and to make sure that they comply with all the regulations. And at that point in time, we will be, there will be other, other information that will be required, and I know that they have found the groundwater at, in March, when they first did that work. We know along the rivers that that does vary, and so additional information will be provided in their final design to verify what it's like in the summer months.
So you would probably verify additional depth of groundwater monitoring data and make sure, I'm sure then you have to determine whether it met the minimum standards.
That's correct. This isn't the first project that we've had, you know, along the Clear Creek Basin, had to deal with the same matter.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you. Tim, it was mentioned, I believe, tonight, first of all, I think that people know in the community that we have all the letters, and that we have all the data that was sent in, in our packets, and we have read them. I think one of the gentlemen's was, did not know if we had all that, and we have it and have read it in advance. But one of the, someone tonight said that the speed, there were no speed limit signs on Xenon. I don't, would that be possible between 44th and 42nd, that there's not a speed limit sign?
There could be. We don't put a lot of speed limit signs in residential areas, they're largely ignored, so.
That's right.
Signs, I mean, signs don't, they don't really make people do anything, and so a speed limit sign in a residential area is really ineffective. The people that use those residential streets know they're in a residential area, they know the area they're in, and they drive accordingly.
My next question is for the applicant. The hours of operation, I know Mrs. Berry asked again, and earlier she said normal business hours, and you said eight to five, and I wanted to, pardon? Seven thirty to five. Is your other establishment close also at five o'clock?
Right.
Okay. I guess I just was thinking about people picking up their vehicles after work, that's about five o'clock.
Five.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. Adam, or maybe Ken, there was one letter in our packet that talked a lot about the size of the facility and the size of the property, and I don't have it right in front of me on that letter, but I remember asking, or thinking of this question. How, have we met setbacks? Where'd Adam go? There you are. The setback requirements and, is it? The setback requirements, I'm sure, have to be met.
Yeah, and that was in one of my previous slides, and I can go to that one, if you want me to.
Thank you, you would go back to that, because one of the letters was really concerned about that.
Yep. So all setbacks have been met. Again, the front setback, since it is in an architectural overlay district, contemporary overlay district, it's got a build-to line rather than a setback, so it can be built anywhere from zero to 20 feet from the property line, it's built at 20, or it's proposed to be built at 20. It's got side setbacks of five, and those are 60 feet and 34 feet, and then the rear is 10 feet, and it's proposed to be 21 feet from the rear.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Any other questions or comments from council? Ms. Langworthy?
I guess I, I kind of want to try to address the traffic on Xenon. I have, I have myself walked down that street and felt the cars whizzing by, and I, I kind of agree with this speed limit sign. They, even if it was there, I'm not sure that they would, they would be going so fast, they wouldn't even know it. But my, my question is about the 10,000 car trips that you say that street can handle, but that street, like someone said, it doesn't have sidewalks, so there's nowhere for pedestrians to walk. And they do park on Xenon, on both sides of the road. So it kind of shrinks an already small street down to, to barely the two lanes. So, I mean, the 10,000 car trips, is that for a road that's larger, wider, I mean?
I think the reference to the 10,000 vehicles a day is a reference to Youngfield and, and 44th.
Okay. So what would be an average?
Xenon, Xenon does not have.
That capacity.
That kind of, of usage or capacity. But the traffic that is proposed to be generated from this facility would not overwhelm the existing facility.
And then, I guess, again, on, on to the traffic. And I, I'm not sure if this is you, Tim, or the applicant, but the vehicles that are going to be using the service are going to be larger than, I mean, some of the cars will be smaller, as you stated, as a passenger car, but a lot of them will be trucks. And so that will put more wear on, on Xenon. I mean, even if, even if it's just 12 a day, that's still 12 a day multiplied by the 50 week, 52 weeks a year. So, I mean, is that, what kind of impact will that have on our road?
Of course, it has some impact, but it's minimal. Remember, one garbage truck.
Well, no, I know what the garbage truck does.
Create as much damage as all these vehicles in an entire year by one pass, the, one large, you know, truck.
Okay. So the impact is.
It's not significant, again.
Sorry, I have questions everywhere, so. If you would like, if I can.
Come back?
Yeah.
Any other questions on this side of the dais before we come back to Council member Langworthy? Mr. Demont?
I'm very familiar with the street. I've had a friend that's lived there for 15 years. I've been up and down that street thousands of times. I just have a couple of questions that, on 58th and Ward at your facility now, do you, you don't do emissions now? And is that a change in the law that, that an independent can do that? Or is that a, I know that a lot of the emissions laws are changing in June of this year for gas? Or is a?
MAHR, M-A-H-E-R. Um, no, it's just, it's just governed by the state. They, there's no set of how many stations they can be, or they can put anywhere within the, within the certain counties. Not every county in the state of Colorado has diesel emissions. It's just based on how many vehicles are in those counties, and that's where they have created the diesel emission program. There are, there's, you can have as many as you want, as many as they comply with the Colorado Department of Health, who sets the standards for that.
Okay. Also, the, I know we, we heard a couple of questions about the smoke from the diesel pickups. As far, I have had a diesel. I don't have one anymore, but I was under the impression if your diesel's smoking, there's something wrong with it. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I know that when you see the black smoke, it's generally not a good thing.
Right. It's based on, yeah, it's based on opacity or the smoke itself. So the test entails probably about one minute of total time with on and off, and if it fails, it fails. And then they have to have work done like on a normal car. You have to spend so much money to try to get it fixed.
Okay. I also want to say it's, you know, the kind of pickup trucks that they're talking about, you know, this is different than what they consider a trucking company. Uh, this is, I mean, a Ford diesel pickup in the same configuration can have a gas motor, too. So it's not, it's not a bigger truck because it has a diesel. It's just maybe has a larger towing capacity. That doesn't make it a bigger truck. I also, you know, even though I hear what everybody says, I, I can't say that it's fair to assume that everyone who has a diesel truck speeds, or everyone who drives a Volkswagen TDI is a speeder because it's got a turbo diesel. I, you know, I mean, people who live on the street, if you have a diesel, you're not speeding just because you have a diesel. So I hear it on that one. I'd like to also ask you about the sign, although I know the availability of the LED or LCD signs are there, I personally just, I don't see a benefit of an LED or LCD sign as opposed to just a very well-designed lighted sign. And I'm just wondering on cost-wise, is that, you know, I mean, the, the additional cost for an LED sign, is that something that you've, I mean, really looked into? You know, the benefits and the, you know, some of the, the major concerns I've heard about the signs are, is really about the LED or LCD. It's not really about the size, it's not about the height. But have you looked into or come up with a design? Has your sign company come to, come up with a design for just a, a lighted sign and not a changing LCD or LED sign? Or is that a?
Not, not currently, no.
Big deal?
I mean, we have one right now that's just in front of our shop, this lighted sign with three, you know, three lines for lettering, just to advertise whatever we need to on, on both sides. We just started out looking like that. Whether that would need to be in consideration, we take that upon consideration also.
I mean, I drove by today, I drove by your shop, and it's, you know, I think that, you know, you're doing a, you know, it, it's a clean shop, it's a good-looking shop, and I know you even, you took it from an old buil, that building sat empty, that gas station was empty for a long time. And I know your reputation up there is very good. I know, I see a lot of people, and I talk to, I know a lot of people who've been up there. I think your reputation in your business is going to be a lot more important than that And I also want to ask about the water. I'm assuming you won't be using any well water, that you'll be bringing in the city water?
Correct.
And is that the same, is that the same tap size on a commercial as it would be on a residential? So we're talking the $34,000-ish dollar? Is it bigger?
I don't, I mean, I don't know fire codes, but I think the building is small enough where I won't need a fire system, so I won't have to bring in like a two-inch tap or whatever have you. You know, I probably would have to bring in probably a one-inch tap, but that would be upon the design of the, the design of the building and the building plans themselves.
Okay. And then one more, this, this slide that we're looking at. Are we assuming that this, the front, is that facing 44th?
Uh, it's.
So the building starts 20 feet from the street. Okay.
You know, I know it's getting late, but I think if, if you're going to answer a question, whether it's staff or the applicant, please use the mic, so we have it all on tape. So the answer, the question was, can you go ahead and just repeat the answer? Adam, please. I hope your leg isn't like that Sunday, in the relay.
The answer, the answer to your question is yes. It'll be 20 feet from Xenon.
Thank you.
You know, also, you know, I hear a lot about the groundwater, and I know that these, you know, you've obviously, they've spared no expense on these, on this building. They've obviously done their homework and put a lot of money into it. It looks like it's going to be a good-looking building, but it, you know, I think groundwater wise, and you're looking at the difference between a minor facility and a major facility, you know, knowing this neighborhood, I, next door, there's a, and I can't see it too well here, but I have 4385. Just from what I can see, I count 20 cars in the backyard of this from the satellite photo. And I know that there's an A-frame engine hoist in the front driveway of this, and the front driveway is dirt. And I know it's there because I borrowed it, I've used it over there. I've had a car down there, my friend did, and I did, so I know it's there. I, I don't know if it's still there, but I know it was there several years ago. But I think that we, you could address it, you know, in so many ways, and I think comparatively to what you're looking at, I really think it's, it's a nice design, they've really thought it out. And, you know, when we're, when we're here to decide, this is a difficult one, this isn't an easy one by far, and this is a little more difficult than I even thought I would have to do something like this. But we have a list of eight, eight criteria that we have to decide if it fits in. And I'm, you know, I'm six that fit in, and I'm barely questionable on two of them. But I guess as far as questions, that's all I have.
Mr. Reinhardt?
No questions.
Ms. Langworthy?
All right. So I guess my, the question I had in, oh, it's all gone again, but my question is, as you stated that you have done the emergency, the spill plans for other, other businesses that you've worked with. Are you willing to, I mean, if that was, if that, if we made that an amendment to this, would that be something you would be willing to do? Or is it something you might be willing to do voluntarily? Because it's not something that, it doesn't need to be done, but to try to address the concerns and the fears of the citizens and their water supply.
Sure. When, when I'm saying a spill plan, I think I speak for the applicant, that we're, we're monitoring the containment of containers with hazardous materials. Okay? Maybe there's recycled oil, or, or oil to be recycled, or, or, I don't know what other things you contain. But the, yes, those, we would be happy to design a container and show that, that design as a condition of use approval.
I'm not saying that that condition would be, I'm just, I guess I'm trying to gauge, you know, your, your willingness to kind of, because it's, and the, the main concerns that I'm getting from this is the traffic on Xenon, which it's already bad. So I, I get that 12 more cars a day going on there isn't going to add a lot of traffic, but I know that I've seen those don't turn lefts, or don't turn left signs, and people don't, it's like a speed limit sign, they're going to blow right through that. Educating your customers will go a long way to helping that, but it, it's something that you, I mean, it's kind of beyond your control. You can ask them to do something, but it doesn't mean that they're going to. And then the other concern is the water. And which I, I fully see, that the, it's a high water table, the, and there's not a lot of buffer in between, and you really don't want people's water that they're drinking and, you know, using to become contaminated. So I guess that is my, my question is, how can, I mean, are there enough safeguards in place to prevent that from happening?
Once again, everything will be contained inside the building. There'll be no storage of oil, antifreeze, et cetera, like that will be outside the building premises. It will all be in that room in the, in the photo where there is no door. That's where everything will be self-contained, whether, uh, used oil will be stored there for pickup, uh, antifreeze will be stored there, items such as that.
And how, all right, so there's no, there's ob, so it's a self-contained room. How do they get the product in and how do you get the product out?
It's, it's pumped into a truck.
Okay, so from where you guys work in the bays, it gets pumped into the room, and then when they.
Well, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We'll move it manually to that room. And then when it gets, when it goes to get taken away, then that service industry will come remove that from the establishment, whether it be antifreeze, oil, items such as that. It'll all be self-contained in the building. There won't be, you know, nothing will be stored outside.
Any other questions or comments before we close the public hearing from council?
I have one question.
Councilmember Jay?
One of the nearby residents, I don't remember the name, but he spoke of a new well that he had drilled, and I'm curious, yeah, how deep that well was.
You're going to have to come on up to the podium, please, and speak in the mic.
My name's Greg Boom, B-O-M. And the, at the 4200 Xenon Street, they re-drilled the well, it was 45 feet deep. They went down to the bedrock there because that was the best way to get the well to pick up the water. He hit water basically about eight feet. He said about seven to eight feet is when they started hitting water initially.
But when he took it down to 45?
Yep.
Okay. That's all.
Any other questions or comments?
Mayor, if I could, I have a clarification on, on a previous comment or previous question. The, the setback of the building from Xenon Street, as was discussed, it's part of the, it's subject to the Architectural and Site Design Manual, and it's actually a build-two line, so there's actually no required minimum setback. It can't be setback more than 20 feet. But it, we want to correct what we, our response was. It, it appears to be setback about five feet from the front, from Xenon property line at the, at the least. Portions of the building are setback somewhat more than that, but I just wanted to offer that as a clarification, that it's not setback 20 feet, it's more like five feet.
You talk about this chart on the screen?
Yes.
That should be five feet on the front?
Yes.
I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to approve case number SUP 1004, a request for special use permit to allow a major automotive repair facility located at 5395 Xenon Street for the following reasons. This request for special use meets all applicable criteria as required by Section 26-114 of the City of Wheat Ridge Code of Laws. There will be no detrimental effect on health, safety, welfare, or convenience to the public in the area. The applicant has made an attempt to mitigate all impacts and concerns addressed in the letters of objection, neighborhood comments, and from staff comments. The special use will not create adverse impacts greater than allowed under existing zoning for the property. There will be no impact on the light, air, or water adjacent to property owners. The special use will not create or contribute to blight in the neighborhood and will not overburden the capacities of the existing streets, parks, schools, and other public facilities and services. The proposed facility is in substantial compliance with the ASDM. Given the unusual shape of the property and other encumbrances on the property, other development opportunities would be difficult. And also with the following conditions. The special use permit be prescribed to the property and may be inherited. Proof of all State of Colorado certificates and approvals be submitted along with building permits. The site be developed in compliance with Exhibits Six and Nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval as stated in the packet, seconded by Councilmember Reinhardt. Discussion on the main motion. Ms. Berry?
I want to applaud the, the neighbors. There was a lot of good work in their comments, a lot of really good comments and concerns. And if we were looking at rezoning this property right now, I might have to agree with them that this might not be the best use. But the property is zoned commercial, they have existing property rights, so I have to look at this as, is this special use here, is it any more impacted than what they are allowed under existing zoning? And I don't believe the traffic impacts are and the other impacts are. There was a lot, again, there was a lot of good research and a lot of good comments that went into those letters and the testimony here. Given what we're dealing with and it being a special use and that there be existing property rights, I will support the application.
Is there any other comments from council? Councilmember Sang?
I will not be supporting this motion. I do not agree that on number six, I believe that the special use will create or contribute to blight in the neighborhood and will overburden the.
and will overburden the capacities of existing streets, parks, schools, and other public facilities and services. And I always like, I know that we, um, have what the staff feels is set criteria for us to be able to pass something like this, but it doesn't mean that we have to pass it because of that. And I just cannot, I, I can't consciously put this type of business in amongst the neighborhood there, so I'll be voting no.
Any other comments? Councilmember Langworthy?
I guess, first of all, I'd like to say is that, that you guys live on this street. We sit up here, and we have to try to make decisions that's best for the city, but you guys live on the street, and, and having only been down that street a couple times, I, I do agree that the traffic is a terrible problem. Um, but not all of the problem is, you know, is, is from the commercial uses on it. A lot of that problem is from people on 44th who just want to try to avoid the traffic and then avoid the light at Youngfield, because I've seen it myself. I, I take 44th to Youngfield every morning, Monday through Friday for work and most weekends, and I see the cars make those left-hand turns, and I just wonder why they're doing that when all they have to wait is a few more seconds just to catch that light, but they do it. Um, this business isn't going to stop that from happening, if it's in place or not in place. Those people are still going to do what they're going to do. Um, the owners are, are willing to try to educate their customers, at least to the best of their ability, to try to, to prevent that impact. And the other thing I heard, and I know that it's not directly affected by this business, is, is the Head Start program and, and the fact that they don't really have good practices in place for how they handle those, those adult, those parents dropping their kids off. And that does impact you a lot, I, for some of you, a lot more than just this business will. So I, I guess I would like to at least offer my willingness to, if, if possible, to go and talk to that Head Start program and see if there is in a way that they can become better stewards of their community as well. But I don't know that that's going, again, it's kind of like a speed, speed limit sign. We can ask, but if people aren't going to do it, and there's nothing that says they can't, then it's kind of out of my control. But having a daughter in school and having a school that's in that, in an area like that, it, it's important. Rachel, my daughter goes to Prospect Valley, and they're right in the middle of a neighborhood. And thus, we take a very proactive approach, try to keep parents aware of how they impact their neighbors. Um, so I, I guess, I, I kind of am of the agreement that I, I feel like I should support this only because some of the other uses on that lot would be much more impactful to you. Instead of having them coming to you tonight and talking to you, they could have put a restaurant there, like they said, and had 100 cars going down your street, and that's 100 cars that that restaurant might not have been willing to educate, and those people might not, you know, they're not going to necessarily care if they make the right out of that, that restaurant and, and be more destructive to your neighborhood. So while I don't necessarily want any more traffic on your road, something might eventually go there, and let's try to find at least a use that's going to have the least amount of traffic going up and down your street.
Any other comments before we pull the counsel? Councilmember Jay?
This is a difficult decision. Um, the fact that, that is commercial zoning, um, which the comprehensive plan cannot be used as a decision-maker since the comprehensive plan, um, allows for the commercial zoning, or has allowed that use, and cannot be considered in the special use part of it. So I can't think about that. I have to go with the use that has been designated. I'm not fond of the fact that we're getting another automobile repair facility, and I am hoping that the owners, uh, we had one person here say that they had shop, they had gone by one of their, their other shop, and the doors were open and, um, not at all performing the way they have stated tonight, and I hope that they will remember that, that our citizens here are expecting, um, the doors to be shut and the sand trap to be cleaned, and, and that you will be good neighbors. That's all.
Okay, please pull the counsel on the main motion.
Motion carries seven to one, with councilmember Sang voting no.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break to 10:20. We're going to go ahead and reconvene, please. It's, uh, item number, next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item six is Resolution 21-2010. Councilmember Reinhardt?
I'd like to introduce Resolution-
I'd like to introduce Resolution 21-2010, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2010 general fund budget to reflect the approval of supplemental budget. Appropriate amount of $20,966 is a matching contribution for funds raised by REIT 2020 through December. This is following through on a commitment or on discussion at City Council in August of last year, where, where City Council, in the continuing effort to support the neighborhood revitalization strategy, agreed to match other contributions, uh, in the Wheat Ridge 2020 budget, um, and is a motion in order.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 21-2010, amending fiscal year 2010 general fund budget to reflect the approval of supplemental budget appropriation from the general fund undersigned, in, in designated reserves in the amount of $20,966 for the purpose of matching contributions made to Wheat Ridge 2020 and 2009.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Berry. Discussion on the main motion. Mr. Stites?
Real fast, I, I will not be supporting this, and I've said it all along, that we cannot issue blank checks to anybody. I think if they would have a specific program, uh, because we have a book here tonight full of information, and I think with taxpayers' money, we have to be a little bit more specific than just handing over a blank check, so I will not support it.
Any discussion? Please pull the counsel on the main motion.
Motion carries six to two, with councilmembers Stites and Demott voting no.
Thank you. Um, item seven, councilmember Sang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, motion to approve a, award of the ITB 10-07, uh, 2010 overlay project to Branham Sand and Gravel in the amount of $729,979.08. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to award the ITB-10-07, 2010 overlay, overlay project to Branham Sand and Gravel, Denver, in the amount of $729,979.08, and that a contingency amount of $72,998 be approved. I further move that the Director of Public Works be authorized to issue change orders up to a total contract and contingency amount of $802,977.08, and all costs associated with the contract be paid from the account number 30303-8884, and that these funds be encumbered for the length of the project in accordance with Ordinance 787-1989 Series. I'd just like to say that I'd be willing to put in the eight cents if that would make things easier.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Discussion on item number seven. Please pull the counsel.
I'm sorry, I didn't reset your votes. Let's do that again. Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Item eight is Resolution 22-2010. Councilmember Demott?
Thank you. Resolution Number 22-2010, a resolution allocating the remainder of the city's 2007 jurisdictional allocation of federal housing and urban development community to develop block, development block grant funds to the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority for the purpose of acquiring a single-family residential home to be rehabilitated and sold.
Is motion in order? Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 22-2010, authorizing the allocation of $74,738 of the city's 2007 jurisdictional allocation of CDBG funds to the Wheat Ridge Housing Authority for the purpose of acquiring a single-family home and rehabilitating it for sale to an owner-occupant.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Jay. Discussion on item eight. Please pull the counsel.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for tonight. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
I have nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
City attorneys' matters?
Not tonight.
City clerks' matters?
Uh, nothing this evening.
Councilmember Berry? Councilmember Adams?
Ever so quickly, I know it's a late hour, but in case, um, the mayor would not be announcing, I don't know if you did have it on yours, Jerry, that, uh, Wednesday, May 12th, um, that's this Wednesday, from five to, or from six, I'm sorry, to 7:30 council chambers, we will be, um, highlighting the four different, um, property or neighborhood plans that we're putting into effect. Wadsworth between 38th and 44th, Kipling north of 44th and 38th, between Sharon Wadsworths and the Future Ward Road commuter rail station. It's an important opportunity for our, um, citizens to come. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Langworthy?
Um, just quickly, I want to, I know that it's sometimes challenging when you want to, uh, speak before your government, and that the decisions that the government makes is not in your favor. It's still not that we don't appreciate everything that every, everyone who was present today had to say, but we do have to make the decisions that are, are best for our community as a whole, and also that, that do meet the requirements. So I wanted to thank everyone who showed up today.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Stites?
Yes, uh, this is a great time to relocate to Wheat Ridge, either your business or your residence. Uh, if you need help, contact staff. Uh, please, as always, try to do a positive thing for your neighborhood, or your community, or even your family. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. You have a handout here from Councilmember Jay. Council, Councilmember Jay?
As a council representative for the Wheat Ridge Business District, I have been asked by the mayor to introduce a plan that brings together city stakeholders into an Economic Development Assembly, the mayor calls connecting the dots. The assembly pulls the efforts of the city and all named organization into a partnership of shared knowledge, cooperation, and effectiveness. We presently have named the City of Wheat Ridge Economic Development Department, the mayor's office, Renewal Wheat Ridge, Enterprise Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge Business District, and Wheat Ridge 2020, plus, and there's, see on your paper, there's others that are being, possibly will be included. And what will be discussed is the mayor, major participants will be presenting, I'm reading this so fast. Relax. Uh, presenting their basic roles in economic development, as well as being added information to see how those roles blend with new projects, and particularly with each other. City staff currently meets biweekly to review economic development as part of basic city operations. However, the multiple organizations do not always have privy to that information or the opportunity, and we will be wanting to, um, share that information with them and to see how they can complement the work to be done with the city as well as with each other. Um, at this time, we're looking at, um, to allow city staff, the mayor's office, and participants time to prepare documentation and presentations. The final week of August has been suggested at City Hall. I am seeking council consensus to ask staff to proceed with preparations to complete this assembly.
Does anybody have a problem with that type of consensus, where the mayor's office will work with city manager's office to work on a summit? Anybody have a problem with that? Okay. Looks like it's okay. Do you have anything else, Councilmember Jay?
No, but thank you. No, but thank you.
Mr. Demott?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Miss Sang? Just a real quick thing, thank you for looking at this consensus with councilmember Jay, councilmember Demott, it came up at the business district meeting. We'll just have probably one, possibly two meetings where everybody can share their information, talk about their projects, their logistics, their funding, and what they do to help for the next steps, like the business district, like was mentioned, and a few other groups together. The chairs will be invited to the, to the meeting, it'll be open, public meeting, but the chairs will be there to present their information about their group, along with Urban New Authority and Patrick and those, those types of organizations, and then there'll be some shared information and discussion. So thanks for that. And then the other question I had is, it was mentioned by the Wheat Ridge Business District Chair about having it on a consensus or a study session to talk about additional funding for the business district. Did anybody want to add that to a study session, to councilmembers or myself and one councilmember?
I'll do it.
So it looks like, okay, so Mike and Davis will actually put that on a study session to talk about funding for business district and their projects. That's it, and now I'll move on to councilmember Reinhardt.
Couple things. First, please get names in for the citizen summit. So far, I hate to admit it, but only His Honor, the mayor, has actually gotten a list of people in for invitation. I'm claiming to have invited several people offline but haven't turned my paperwork in, and we need that. I think that's an important event. Second thing is, I, I would like to pretend that I'm councilman Stites tonight and welcome the new business to Wheat Ridge, and I think it's wonderful that they came from Arvada to spend money, invest in our town, and come to work here with here, and I'm confident that there will be minimal impact on the community. And then, and then finally, I'm going to move to convene an executive session of the city council under Charter Section 5.7b1d and 5.7b2 and CRS 246-4024b and F specifically for a conference with the city attorney, city manager, and appropriate staff for legal advice on a personnel matter concerning the employment contract of the city manager and the negotiation of a new such contract. I further move to adjoint the council meeting at the conclusion of the executive session.
Is there a second? We have a motion to go into executive session, second by councilmember Sang and Jay and Langworthy, I believe, or Adams. Please pull the counsel.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Mike, it's too late, I'm just, I'm barely awake.